Good evening and welcome to the April 24, 2013, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. I'm Kevin Staunton, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Shearer.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Potts.
Here.
Commissioner Platter.
Here.
Commissioner Forrest.
Here.
Chair Staunton. Here, thank you. Next up on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any revisions, additions, or modifications to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Meeting agenda is approved. There should be copies for those who are in the audience of the meeting agenda outside the chambers, if you don't have one. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. There is one item on the consent agenda this evening. It is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Edina Planning Commission for April 10th of 2013. Are there any revisions or additions to the minutes? Commissioner Potts.
Mr. Chair, item number 12, which is on page 11, single two-car garage requirement. I don't recall, and in the last sentence, it says we directed staff to leave the code as-is. I don't recall that and would like to end that last sentence at the first semicolon, so that we can continue the debate and perhaps add it to this evening's list under the ordinances. So with that revision, I'd approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved and the consent agenda is approved. Next up is community comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public are encouraged to comment on items of interest that are not on this evening's agenda. And I'm going to take a moment here just to recognize that we have some students here from one of the local schools, and I am so pleased that they are sitting in the front rows at my encouragement. And what I'd like to do is ask one of you to come up and just introduce the group and tell us a little bit about why you're here this evening.
Where would you like me to stand?
If you'd stand up at the podium and speak into that microphone. Introduce yourself and tell us your name and tell us what you're up to.
Hi, I'm Dylan Ricard, and these are ninth graders from Valley View Middle School, Mr. Statham and Mr. Anderson's class. We are here for a project, taking field notes on government.
Terrific. You know, I am going to recommend on the record as we're speaking, Dylan, that you will be given extra credit for this evening's appearance as the student who came up and represented your colleagues quite well, I will say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, and welcome to all of you. Any other comments from the community on items that are not on this evening's agenda? All right. Next up on the agenda, we have two public hearings, the first of which is a variance. The applicant is Revision LLC at 31 Cooper Circle in Edina, Minnesota. I think it is for Molly and Patrick Cronin. Chris, you're going to introduce this item?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the subject property is at 31 Cooper Circle. It is a front yard setback variance request. The subject property is located on the south side of Cooper Circle, as highlighted. It backs up to a ponding area. This is an aerial photograph of the subject property. And a little closer shot of that with its relationship to the front yard and along Cooper Circle Street. The request is for a 10.5-foot front yard setback variance. What the homeowners are hoping to do is add a third garage stall to the north wall of their house. This is how the home looks currently, and the area in question is right here. There's a bump out on the two-car garage that is a storage area, and that would simply be pulled out to accommodate a third garage stall. This is the property directly to the east. It does have a three-car garage. The property to the west that also has a three-car garage. This is a survey of the subject property showing the existing and proposed conditions. The sort of boxed-in area highlighted in green that is around the home are the required setbacks. So, the home was a custom-built home in 2005, and it fits exactly within the required setbacks. The area in question is this addition to the front of the garage. The area that's solid green is the overlap into the front yard setback area. The ordinance requires that any addition maintain the average front yard setbacks of the homes on either side of the subject property. In this instance, the average is this green line, which is approximately 37 feet. They're hoping to add on a third garage stall, which would add approximately 13 by 19 feet of an addition to the garage, which would be located 26 and 1/2 feet away from the front lot line. The property is 20,270 square feet in area, with the home proposed addition occupying about 17.1 percent of the lot. And as you can see, the home was designed to fit exactly within the buildable area when constructed in 2005. This is a floor plan of the existing and proposed conditions, showing the existing garage with that bump out for storage currently, and then the addition that would come out. Garage doors would face east or west along the east wall, as it currently does now. This is the new front elevation of the house, as it would be facing Cooper Circle. Again, the addition of the garage, which would be coming closer to the street, and a view of the east elevation of the house with that addition showing adjacent to that existing garage. Primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site. Staff believes the proposal is not reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is permitted in the single dwelling unit district, and the existing home and garage currently complies with all the requirements, including the minimum two-car garage requirement. The ordinance does require a two-car garage, but anything beyond that is not a minimum requirement. The existing home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot and was designed to fit exactly within the setbacks. The garage addition would extend out beyond the other homes along the block. The front yard setbacks vary along Cooper Circle, anywhere from a bit over 39 feet down to about 29 feet, and they are proposing 26 and 1/2 feet. The home was built in 2005, fits within the required footprint, and provides the minimum two-car garage as required by ordinance. Staff recommends denial of the variance. Denial is based on the following findings: that the home was built to code and to fit within the required setbacks, and includes that minimum two-car garage requirement. The proposal would not meet the required standards for the variance because the proposed use of the property is not reasonable, given the fact that it does currently conform to the code, and it is not consistent with the existing conditions that are around the cul-de-sac. And the intent of the ordinance is to provide adequate spacing from the street. The proposed garage would then erode the distance between the structure to the street edge and would extend out into the front yard area beyond any of the other structures. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Shearer.
Chris, tell me on a cul-de-sac how you measure the front yard setback under code?
It would be the same as on a regular standard lot. The front yard setback would just have to follow the curve of the front yard. So it would dip in as the front lot line would dip in.
And the measurement would be based on the houses to the east and west?
Correct. It's the average of the homes on either side. That's what the requirement is for front yard setback.
Even though they're on a curve?
Yes.
Well, one is on a curve and one is not. One is on a straight street.
Correct. Yes.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Chris, could you put up the survey? So, when I looked at this and then also looked at the plat map, it looks like a portion of the property, at the southern end of the property, is actually in the pond. Does the property line go into the pond? Is that right?
It does. It extends into the pond.
And the setback between the rear of the house and the pond is 50 feet, 50.2 feet, it looks like?
That's correct.
And is that a minimum setback because of the water?
Yes.
So they can't come, when the house was built, they couldn't have brought it any closer to the pond than they are?
No. In fact, they wanted to be, and these aren't the same owners that designed the house. The owners that designed the house wanted to have a deck extend out into that 50-foot setback area, and they attempted to go through the variance process and decided to pull back from that, and then they put the deck, as you can see, on the side here. They also had contemplated, I know this because I do remember.
Sure.
Looking at the plans way back then. They did contemplate putting on a third garage stall, but it wouldn't fit. I mean, it is a tight buildable area, given the setback from the pond. Typically, you'd have a 25-foot rear yard setback.
Right. So if they could have come further south, they originally would have been able to build the three-car garage?
Yes.
Because they wouldn't have been as close to the street?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to the applicants. Are the applicants, are there representatives here? Invite you to come on up and tell us a little bit about your application and why you think we should grant a variance in this case.
Hi, thanks a lot for letting us come and speak to you tonight. My name is Molly Cronin, and this is my husband, Pat Cronin. And we, first off, want to say thank you for your service on the Planning Commission, because I know it takes time, and we appreciate the time that you spend in keeping with the stewardship of this city. It's a nice thing that you do for all of us. We are lifelong residents of Edina. I graduated in 1991, and Pat graduated in 1987. And we are really invested in this great town. After we got married, we moved here and started to raise our family, and we really love living here. And recently, Pat and his dad and his two brothers own a business, and they have just bought a building over in the Cahill 70th area and are moving the business into Edina. So we are really invested in this great city, and we think it's a great place to work and a great place to raise our family. And that's one of the reasons why we want to invest further in our home. And as was mentioned just before we came up, we were not the original builders of the home. We bought it in 2008, in the summer of 2008. And our request is obviously to add a third stall onto our garage. And if this request is granted, it would be consistent with the other homes adjacent to us in the neighborhood. And we would build it with an aesthetic and a quality that is consistent with our current home, which we're really proud of. And we would make it so that it was consistent with that and look nice on the property that it sits. And we can talk about it and further, but you guys kind of touched on the fact that the way our lot sits on the cul-de-sac, we are subject to the largest part of the curve. So we do have a more significant setback issue than the rest of the homes on the cul-de-sac. But let me tell you a little bit about why we are looking to add this third stall to our garage. As you can see in this overhead picture, the pond is in the backyard, and a lot of different homes border this pond. And in the wintertime, or still now, the rink is still out there, actually, but we maintain an ice rink, and, two ice rinks, actually, and a sledding hill. And we have a lot of fun out there with a lot of the neighbors, and we use a lot of equipment to maintain that. We don't have a Zamboni, actually. That's a joke. He wants one. I said no. But we do use these. It's a four-wheeler with a plow on the front and a snow blower, which we use for our driveway as well, but we use those for the rink. And currently, they are stored in that bump-out area on the side of our garage. And as you can see, it's a pretty tight squeeze for him to get into the car. Frequently, he gets in on the passenger side and climbs over. And then to access them, in the wintertime, we have to pull the cars out, or at least his car out on the left, and then back the equipment out. And that's if it's 5:00 a.m. and it's been snowing and he's got to clear the driveway, or if it's time to plow the rink. And we love the neighborhood. We love the pond. We've got a ton of kids in the neighborhood. They all use it. We're out there all winter long. This, Carol Levin, does a segment every winter for the best backyard rinks, and ours was featured. And this is not an atypical situation. People are out there, the kids, in the afternoon, using the rink. It's really a fun spot. Kids of all ages. We joke, you know, grooming future state champions. But, you know. Anyway, so that's just something that makes it a real special place for our family and for the neighbors. And it does take some time and work to maintain the rink. You can ask the city park department, they do such a great job on the area rinks. And because of that, it requires the equipment. And as I was saying before, in order to access the equipment, we have to move the cars out of the garage, or shimmy in from the passenger side when we want to use the car. And then the alternative would be to park outside, but that's not really sightly for the other neighbors. And if we do that, then in the winter, we can cause other problems. You want to do the next slide? Oh, no, just a joke. You're carrying your car outside lately. Anyway, you can go to the next one. So with your approval, we can create the extra space necessary to store the equipment and access our cars. We can protect our cars and equipment from the harsh winters, and we can keep the equipment inside, parked inside and housed away, so that the neighbors don't have to look at it. And we can continue to create and maintain a fun winter recreation place for our entire neighborhood. So we thank you for your time. Did I miss anything? Oh, yes, yeah. We did talk with all of our neighbors, and we got a lot of approval. We had one neighbor who was a little concerned with the view. He's on the end of the cul-de-sac, and I think he submitted an email to you, Steve Lucky. He came and talked to us, which we totally respect his right to do. We just note that from his view, if we took down the trees in our yard, he would be looking, his view would end at the neighbor's house that's right there. So he's either going to be looking at trees and a little bit of a garage, or the neighbor's house. So, but we understand his position. Okay, so.
Is that the view right?
Yeah, so his view right now, and then with the stall on there. So it's, you know, it does change his view somewhat, which we understand, but we think it's also keeping with how it looks now. And it's, like I said, it's either going to be the neighbor's house or the garage, so. Did I cover the stuff? Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Cronin. Any questions for the applicants? Commissioner Platter.
You removing any trees to do this work?
No, I don't believe we have to. No, there's arbor v. ID behind there, but they're a significant distance away where we don't have to.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Potts.
On the buildable area plan that we have, the site survey, we've got the average setback line, which is about 37 feet back, and I believe the standard setback line, Chris, the 30-foot line, is that also shown on there? And while Chris is looking for that, I just wanted to ask if you worked with your planners or builders to try and fit those three garage stalls within the 30-foot setback line?
My name's Sven Gustafson. I'm with Revision as well. And there's simply no way to add a third stall to this garage without infringing on that setback line? If that was the question.
It was, and I wanted to just distinguish, I mean, the whole front of the garage extends beyond the average setback line, but only a portion of it beyond the city standard.
Correct. And if you can turn on the overhead camera here, I can point that out to you. So you're correct in saying that the entire front of the garage extends beyond this dash line. This is the average setback line. This darker line is the standard setback line. So it's really just that portion that I've highlighted that is beyond the typical setback line, if the average weren't to come into play.
And you say there's no way to get a third stall within the typical 30-foot setback?
Not with a depth that would accommodate a vehicle.
The one we have drawn is smaller than the other two on the backside, so we've tried to make it as small as we can.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I add, John Dealey with Revision also? The only possible way potentially doing that would then be going towards the sideyard setback and going for, so.
A different variance.
A different variance process.
You could push it back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schroder.
Thank you. If I understand your argument or your position, it is to store things you use in the winter, and you showed the picture of the four-wheeler and the snow blower. So why do you need 19 feet to do that? Because it seems, as you were describing, you could do and fit within the 30-foot setback by just carving back a little bit on the front and having a shorter-depth garage, which you don't need because you're not going to put a car in there.
Well, I think right now, we're not going to put a car in there. We do have three children. They're 10, 8, and 6. And I didn't go into that in the presentation, but certainly, as they get older, my guess is we'll be having a car for them, you know, in the next, you know, six or seven years or so. At some point, there'll be a third car that we will want to park in there. And plus, it seems like a thing to look symmetrical with the home, to make it look like it belongs there, as opposed to having this bigger area that we can't, would we have aesthetically from the front, how would we have the door work? Would we have to access it from the back or the front? And so that's why we decided to, just in terms of how you would invest in a house wisely, make it a third stall. And again, a smaller one, not as deep as the others, but one that could fit a car in the event that we do have one, you know, six or seven years down the road.
Further questions for the applicants? All right, thank you. Don't go far, there may be more questions.
Thanks a lot.
So this is a public hearing, and so at this point, I'm going to open the meeting for comments from members of the public who have an interest. You can just come to one of the side podiums and state your name and address and give us your thoughts on this application. Anyone who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing no speakers on the application, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed, and we'll bring the discussion to the Planning Commission. Comments or further questions from commission members? Commissioner Shearer.
I, just for the record, want to note that I have done business with Revision in the past, so I thought that that's something we should put on record tonight. Beyond that, I would observe, and it's not going to be a surprise to my fellow commissioners, I'm in favor of garages that house extraneous equipment and extra cars. I think that it is very consistent with the neighborhood in which this house exists. And I think we have, you know, a little bit of a difficulty with the pond setback, the narrow lot to the front. And frankly, we're asking, you know, for one corner of this to extend beyond the 30-foot setback. I find it a very reasonable request, and I will vote for approval.
Further comments or questions? Just a question for staff, Chris or Kerry. So we talked about this average and then the standard 30-foot. Is that, do we have a standard 30-foot?
We do have a standard 30-foot front yard setback. That's usually in a new undeveloped subdivision, but we really don't have.
So if there were no houses on either side, then it would be 30 feet?
30 feet.
Otherwise, it's the average of the two.
Correct.
And I would note that the, as Ms. Cronin identified, there is an email in the packet from Steve Lucky, who lives two doors down, and he makes the point that because of the cul-de-sac, the front lot line, sight lines are different. It certainly is different than a grid-like street where it's, you know, the same view up and down. Here, it's kind of pinched by the nature of the cul-de-sac. And so he, while I can't tell whether he was opposed or in favor of, he wanted to make sure that we were mindful of the impact of encroaching on the setback into the sight lines for those who are at the end of the cul-de-sac. Commissioner Forrest.
My initial point of view on this was, you can't do everything with every property. However, I am affected by the fact that the pond is there, and that did originally limit the sighting of the house, along with the fact that it's on a curve. My second concern, when I just read the introduction to the report, was, is the back wall going to be, you know, a three, you know, flat three-stall garage? And it's not, because it's indented in the front, and that minimizes, I think, the impact on the neighbor as well. So I am, based on the fact of the pond, the difficulty sighting, the shape of the lot, I'm inclined to support this as well. And regarding the size of the addition, I think there's a good argument, even though economics don't play into our decision, that it's, if you're going to add on to it at all, you might as well do something that's going to be more useful for the future.
Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm going to jump on the same bandwagon. I think that the amount that they're looking for in terms of the variance is relatively small. I agree with Commissioner Shearer that, at least to some extent, I would also like to see equipment covered and concealed, as opposed to sitting out in the driveways. So it's nice to have, and I think useful to have, a place to store it. I am a little bit troubled about how far it extends, but under the circumstances, I think I'm willing to support it as well.
Commissioner Potts.
Mr. Chair, to jump to the bottom line, I'm going the other way on this, in support of staff recommendation. I think, I recognize the troubles with our average setback rule, but to go beyond the basic 30-foot pushes it too far for my taste. And I think that, I certainly appreciate everything the family does to keep the pond clear and to work on making that a great usable outdoor space in the wintertime. I think that's fantastic. But I don't think it, I guess I see the variance request outside of this, and also see that they plan to put a new deck on the back, and I would think there must be a way to pursue ways to put the equipment back there.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're not putting a new deck on the back of the house.
Ms. Cronin, could you come up to one of the microphones? And I think it's an important issue to address, if we can clarify. The side is probably better.
And let me just explain, I saw it says "future sun deck" on your plans. That's what I was looking at.
Those might be old, an old version of the plans, but we have, when they originally built the house, way back in 2005, they had talked about putting a deck off the back of the house, and then because of being subject to the 50-foot setback, they didn't. And then we put, when we bought the house, we put the deck on the side to be respectful of the 50-foot setback, and we put the deck on the side of the house. So there's no proposal to build anything on the back.
Okay, and no, I mean, this is.
No future plans.
No space to, under the deck to store equipment?
Not heated space, no. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Platter.
Having said all that, I would make a motion to approve this against the recommendation of the city staff. If there's any subject to any conditions.
Loathe as we are to go. Lethal as we are to go against the recommendation of the city staff. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Commissioner Forrest.
Then I think we should add in findings, um, as far as what we consider the, um, practical difficulty, which could be the, uh, location of the pond and the shape of the lot, and anything else people may want to suggest.
Is that acceptable to the mover and to the seconder?
Yes.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Jackie, when do we call the roll on that?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroeder?
Nay.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Aye.
Commissioner Car-
Nay.
Commissioner Potz?
Nay.
Commissioner Platterer?
Aye.
Commissioner Forrest?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, so the variance is granted, and, uh, thank you for coming this evening and presenting your plan. Uh, next up is another variance, um, by Bruce and Ann Christensen at 4515 Brown Dale Avenue in Edina for a 4.17-foot sideyard setback variance to add living space, uh, to the property. And Chris is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Chair, and, uh, members of the Planning Commission. The subject property is a side, is at 4515 Brown Dale. It is a sideyard setback variance. The subject property is located north of Bridge Street and east of Brown Dale. It's on a corner lot. It's located within the Historic Country Club District. This is an aerial photograph showing, um, that corner lot and the home. This is a recent photograph of the home as it exists today. What you'll notice is that the north, uh, wall of the house, um, the main portion of the house is actually located eight feet away from the north lot line. As you go further back, you can see that there's garage that comes a bit closer. Um, that's approximately five feet, a little over five feet away from the north lot line. Garage is conforming. The existing main portion of the house is non-conforming. The, um, home is, the living space of the home, uh, should be 10 feet away plus additional setback for height. And then there's a porch above the five-foot setback garage, uh, that is non-conforming. This is the property directly across the side street and adjacent to the home. This is the home directly to the north that would be affected by, uh, the variance. This is an, an existing condition survey, uh, showing that north wall, um, with the eight-foot setback of that north, uh, wall of the living space, and then it, in, it dents out towards the north lot line, approximately five feet away, with a three-car garage with the porch area above. What they are proposing is removing that three-car garage below, um, actually reducing the size of it. They would like to retain the porch area above, so it gets complicated because they need to keep that, um, wall, uh, along the north side because that supports the porch above. Uh, and then add a detached three-car garage. The three-car garage conforms to all the ordinance requirements, as does the improvements to the house with the exception, uh, of the north wall of the existing garage. It sounds a bit, um, it, it's, it's a little awkward because the porch above can be expanded at the non-conforming setback that it's at right now, but the living space on the main level cannot be added into the garage area because the living space gets closer to that north wall. The ordinance allows a continuation of a non-conforming setback, um, on the same level. And because the north wall currently, uh, the living space portion of it is further away than the garage, what the variance is being requested for is this area right here, um, of the proposed addition where that existing garage currently is, um, that also supports that porch that's above. This is the floor plan of the existing home, the main floor, with that three-car garage. Uh, this is what they are proposing with the detached garage that conforms to the ordinance requirements. Uh, some of that area that would be converted from the old garage as living space is actually an open porch. So it's really just this area right here that is, uh, in question. This is the existing upper floor with the porch above that's currently there. Uh, this is what they're proposing. The porch would remain. They need to maintain that wall to support, uh, the porch above. This is the existing elevation, as you see from the south, and then the proposed, the rear elevation or the east elevation, again, um, existing and what they're proposing, and that north elevation, and this is the elevation that would be affecting that north property owner, that is closest to the improvement. It's really just this area right here. They'd like to maintain that porch above. Primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site? This has already been reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Board. It's received a certificate of appropriateness, um, both for the addition and for the garage. They do look at both if it's visible from the street, and because it's on a corner lot and can be viewed from the side street, uh, both improvements were approved and reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Board. Primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site? Staff believes the proposal to be reasonable, given that the proposed use is permitted in the R1 SIS district and complies with all the requirements with the exception of that existing north wall setback of the garage. The home conforms to the lot coverage requirements, is appropriate in size and scale for the lot. It meets all of the other ordinance requirements. Uh, the footprint of the room addition would be less than the existing attached garage and will continue to support the porch above. Uh, the improvements will provide a reasonable use of the site and improve on existing conditions. Spacing between the proponents and the neighboring structures will remain the same. Really, most of the conditions will remain on-site with the, um, exception of a, a new detached garage. The home improvement and garage have been reviewed and approved by the Heritage Preservation Board. Both have, uh, received a certificate of appropriateness. Staff does recommend approval, um, based on the following findings, that with the exception of the variance requested for sideyard setback, the proposal would meet the required standards. It's a bit ironic that they could actually add on to the porch above, and that would not require a variance, but to occupy that space below, uh, does, that is, uh, part of the garage. The proposal would meet the required standards for a variance because the proposed use of the property is reasonable as it is slightly altering existing conditions without reducing setback or impacting the surrounding neighbor. The practical difficulty imposed is the setback in existing attached garage location that does not provide opportunity to convert the garage to living space on the first floor. The original placement of the home closer to the north lot line makes it difficult to adjust those living spaces within the existing structure and then to allow, um, continuation of that porch area above. Uh, staff, uh, would subject any, uh, approval to the following conditions. That the approval be based on the site plan and survey date stamped April 9th, 2013, and building plans and elevations date stamped April 9th, 2013. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Ms. Zucker? Commissioner Forrest.
So is the curb cut going to be moved? It, it's kind of confusing from the drawings, and with the weather, the way it's been, I just wasn't looking at that. Yeah, but there's a, okay.
The curb cut would have to be moved, um, because it is a detached garage and it's moving further to the east. Uh, my understanding is there was some concern about a boulevard tree, but, um, apparently that, those do not have to be removed. Um, there are some arborvitae's that I think will have to be removed as part of it.
Okay, um, there is an illustration in here that shows two, um, drive openings, as I was curious about.
I think that's showing the existing and, and then also the proposed.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Chris. Uh, are the Christensens here? Or some representative? I just invite you to come forward and give us your name and address and, um, tell us about your application. Yeah, you'll need a microphone from Jordan.
Hi, I'm Jean Ray Camp Larson, the architect for the project. This is Lomanda Day. She's one of my associates. And Anna Chris Christiansen can be here today. I think Chris did a good job of explaining the project. The intention, I think, is to detach that garage and really to get more sunlight into the main living spaces of the house. And, uh, I think that detaching a garage actually breaks down the volume of the, of the building on the site, so there is benefit for that.
Any questions?
Ooh, how about that? Uh, questions for Ms. Larson? Commissioner Potz?
Uh, I may have missed this in the, uh, staff presentation. It looks like you're reusing the foundations. Is that?
You know, I don't think we will end up reusing the foundation. I think, um, the complexity of that existing structure, uh, means that it's going to be a bit challenging. If we can, we will, but we haven't entirely determined if we can. Um, really, it would be on that north side that we would reuse it because it's changing along this other side. So the only place that the foundation would remain would be here, and I'm guessing the answer is no. But I, I will say that we haven't entirely determined whether that's possible.
Sure, but I, and I think I did see some, uh, salvaging of brick for reuse.
Absolutely, we're salvaging all, yeah, we will salvage a brick and reuse it. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Larson? Commissioner Forrest? Commissioner Platterer? Commissioner Forrest? Commissioner Platterer?
There is a question about the ash tree.
Did you two want to have a conversation? I'm sorry. The ash tree.
Yes, that's by the driveway. Um, is that going to be removed?
No.
Okay.
No, I'll point that out on the site plan. And the two, um, I think, um, the, the two curb cuts you were referring to might have been here. This is just dash showing the old curb cut. Here's that 40-foot ash, and here's the new curb cut. So that will remain. And there are arborvitae along the stretch here, so they will have to be removed. Are, they plan to repay, replace arborvitae that will get disrupted along this, um, lot line between the two neighbors. And that was a concern of their neighbor to this side.
Commissioner Platterer?
What are you doing with roof drainage on that garage? Are you making, how are you draining that? Is, what are, what are the grades doing? Does it go to the neighbor or where does it go to?
It's a good question. This is actually kind of a high spot, so there, there will be drainage that happens. And currently, there is a French drain on the site that, that comes through this back space. And so we will have to drain some water that direction, and some water, we're also planning to get to, um, drain between these two buildings, so.
So it shouldn't be, at least the roof drainage shouldn't go over to the neighbors and-
Right. You know, I mean, some of it probably will, right? Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you. Stay nearby. We may have more questions. Uh, this is a public hearing, so we, at this time, we'd invite members of the public who would like to comment on this application to come forward and share your thoughts. Please state your name and address, and unless you have something that you want to show us on the overhead, the two-side, uh, podiums are best. Going to make my invitation shorter and shorter if no one's going to come up. All right, seeing no, uh, public comments, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed, and then we'll bring this back up to the Planning Commission for discussion and deliberation. Thoughts? Commissioner Carpenter.
This is probably one of the smallest variances I think we've seen, I would assess. I mean, maybe there's, maybe we've broken the record with a smaller one, but circumstances seem eminently reasonable, and I would go on to say necessary from what I can discern. So, from that perspective, I think it's a supportable, a very supportable request.
Commissioner Shearer.
Pardon me. Um, I, I agree with Commissioner Carpenter, and I would also add from time that I spent on the Heritage Preservation Board, I, I really like what this does to the neighborhood in terms of the separate garage and breaking up that long line that had existed on the, um, one side of the property. I think this is very attractive, and I will support it.
I'd entertain a motion to that effect. Commissioner Potz?
Mr. Chair, I'll, uh, move to accept the variance proposal, uh, based on staff review and conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The variance is granted. Thank you. That concludes the, uh, public hearings for this evening, and now we move to, um, Agenda Item 7, Reports and Recommendations, and the first of those items is a sketch plan review for the Continental Gardens Assisted Living at 7151 York Avenue in Edina. Carrie.
Thanks. Uh, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This property is located down in the southeast corner of the city. It's the Continental Gardens site, just north of the YMCA on the east side of York, right on the border of Richfield here. Site exists today with a 12-story, 264-unit, uh, senior apartment building. Couple of pictures of it, uh, as it exists today. This site is 5.85 acres in size. The density today is 45 units per acre. The zoning of this site is PSR 4, our planned senior, um, senior residential district. What the applicant is looking to do and is seeking your feedback on tonight is to build a four-story addition off the east side of the building. So this is a, a rendering of what the project might look like. This is taken from York. You see the existing building. So this would be the four-story. It would be 76 units, and it would be an assisted living-type facility, have some memory care. So just to show you a few of the renderings, again, the existing building. There, uh, they would be proposing to, uh, connect the two buildings with an elevated skyway that would cross the existing parking lot at the back of the building. Another look at the site. There's that skyway. And the applicant can go through some of that in more detail as part of their presentation. Uh, the issues to consider here, uh, within our comprehensive plan, we've established a maximum density for high-density residential, and that's 30 units an acre. Uh, you may recall, those of you that were on the Planning Commission when we went through that, your recommendation to the, the city council was 12-plus units per acre, not to establish a cap. Previous comprehensive plans established our maximum cap, um, they, they didn't establish a cap. It simply read, "A density and height should be based on proximity of low-density, uh, uses and level of transit services available." So it was kind of a project-by-project basis. So when that 30, uh, unit per acre cap was established, we actually rendered some of our high-density residential as non-conforming with our comprehensive plan. And those are the, uh, the, uh, projects that are highlighted in red, including the existing site here, um, at 45 units an acre. So the, um, we also have a, whoop, go back. A zoning ordinance requirement, um, a standard in the, the PSR 4, um, district that would limit the site to 182, uh, units total. So currently, the site doesn't conform with our existing zoning ordinance, uh, on that site. In looking at the compliance table with some of our other standards, it would meet, um, setback standards. The maximum height on the site is four stories would comply. Building coverage is 16 percent. You saw that, uh, large areas of green space around. So again, the two things that don't comply would be that with the comprehensive plan, so this would require an amendment to the comprehensive plan. One thing that we may want to look at, and we don't differentiate between an all-age housing, um, project and senior housing. There's a distinct difference in parking and traffic generated from that kind of use. So we may want to look at an amendment to the comprehensive plan to, uh, maybe differentiate between an all-aged apartment facility and senior housing, uh, one thing to consider here. Uh, one thing to mention, all- One thing to mention also, the existing parking, or the existing housing project doesn't have underground parking, so it's also non-compliant in terms of the number of underground spaces required. The addition would conform with our ordinance for requirements for underground parking that would be underneath this facility. So with that, I can stand for any questions that you might have, and the applicant is also here to make a presentation.
Thank you, Carrie. One question I have, I notice on your list of high-density developments is the 7500 York Cooperative at 36 units per acre. I recall that being a project that did something similar to this, added a structure that was designed specifically to provide a broader spectrum of care possibilities for a senior housing community. Was that before or after the 2008 comprehensive plan change?
I think that was after.
Yeah, so that happened even though, I assume it would have been subject to the same density limitations in the comprehensive plan? Other questions? Commissioner Carr.
I was wondering if there's some landscaping shown on the plans here. Any new landscaping going around the current building in connection with this project to tie the landscaping together?
I would think we would, you know, if, assuming that this is acceptable for Planning Commission and Council, we would look at a greater detail landscape plan.
Yeah, are there any sidewalks? Again, I'm not sure the detail is here, but it'd be nice to see some pedestrian sidewalks at the facility as well, in addition to the landscape tie-in between the two buildings, so it looks as though it was designed as one building unit.
Commissioner Platter.
Do you know if anything's proposed for the exterior of the existing building, as far as any upgrades to match this or anything?
I hadn't heard anything in terms, in my discussions, that they would be making any changes to the existing building.
Okay, it's kind of public housing looking, so.
Other questions from Mr. Teague. Commissioner Carr.
That was another issue I had as well. The two buildings don't look as though they go together exactly. I think that's the issue, that going to be some compatible building materials in the new building that will tie it into the current building.
Certainly, that would be, that would be good feedback in addition to the, our density issue.
Other comments, questions? Commissioner Carr.
From an energy standpoint, when does that come into consideration in terms of building development?
Yeah, that would be part of our formal application where we're considering an actual project. This is more of, you know, giving general guidelines. You may want to provide that direction to the applicant, that those are sustainable design principles, things like that, that you'd be looking for as part of the next phase.
Commissioner Platter.
Oh, two things. One, do you know if that would be stick-built, wood-framed?
I don't know for certain. That'd be a good question for the applicant.
And then the other item was, there's kind of some pseudo-activity space back there. Do you know if that's going to be repurposed or reconditioned? You know, there's a gazebo and whatever else is back there, and from a park area and landscaping, kind of your point earlier, and what's, what else is happening? The, you know, one thing I'm sure that'll come up is what you see from the road above, and it's actually Richfield, which would be to the east. That's actually about 20 feet above the first floor there, and what kind of screening, if anything, is put there with landscaping or anything, too. That'd be one of my concerns. You don't seem like you'd see it from York, but you would see it definitely from the back, which is all, it borders up to residential along the whole back.
Right, there's a lot of opportunity here, a lot of green space for sidewalk, additional landscaping, more activities on the site. Again, that's good feedback for the applicant as well.
So I think, Commissioner Schroeder.
Carrie, on the aerial photograph where it depicts the parcel boundaries, there's a long skinny parcel on the east side. What is that parcel? Is that one right there?
This one right here?
Is that part of the right-of-way, or is it a separate parcel under separate? It actually has a zoning classification tied to some of the north that suggests it's mixed-use, but.
And I believe it's owned by the city, so if that was intended to be right-of-way in the future, that would be my guess.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think at this point, is the applicant present? Great. And I'll remind folks who are watching and our students who are here, this is what we call a sketch plan review, and so it's not a formal application at this point. This is something that we have put into our process to ask applicants who are considering applications to come forward at a very early stage, so that they could get some feedback from the Planning Commission and the City Council at a time when they haven't spent a whole lot of time and money investing in a particular design, and we think it makes it easier for the applicant to kind of hear and be responsive to the things that we might suggest. And then for the commissioners, what I'd like to suggest we think in terms of is, you know, first of all, what, you know, whether the use that's being proposed is appropriate. Second, site configuration, we spend a lot of time talking about site configuration. And then third, design, and I've heard, you know, all three of those things kind of mentioned already. And so I'd invite you to share with us what you're thinking, and then we can have some discussion and give you some feedback, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, this is a great opportunity to get some feedback. My name is Teri Sirmak. I'm the president of Sirmak Roads Architects. We are working with the developer who is, and the owner, new owner of the Yorktown Continental High Rise. We're doing a $12 million renovation of the building, the existing building, and so that, that building will be getting all-new windows. The aggregate panels between windows are going to be replaced, yeah. And there will be some landscaping work done on that immediate surrounding property, and we're also bringing sidewalks from the building out to York Avenue where currently there are none. That's, that's been an issue for residents. So was this, this, working on the renovation project was the impetus to this addition idea, seeing that there's a lot of unused property on the site right now, and there are 264 residents in the building who are aging, and it's surprising the number of residents who have stayed in the property for 10, 20, 30 years, and the number of residents who are in their 90s, a very high percentage of the population. So we're looking at it with the idea of thinking how you could make a low-impact transition into higher levels of care for housing, staying in your neighborhood, staying next to the people you already know and have relationships with. So it was kind of a natural idea to think about an addition to the existing building, and using the skyway concept to link it so that we could have movement back and forth among the residents, and I believe that the traffic would go both ways. The assisted-living building would have a kitchen and dining facility component, and the idea was that residents in the 12-story building who don't have that function currently could use that and go across the skyway and mingle with neighbors, and there would be movement back and forth. The assisted-living residents could attend activities in the large community space in the existing 12-story building. So we, we looked at that idea as kind of providing the next level of care for 76 residents. And we also thought that the, the setting is somewhat ideal for that, although the density number is on the high end, and certainly may be the highest in the city of Edina, I think the impact would be very minimal, given that it's a property behind a 12-story building, very far setback from York Avenue. The grade level change from the Richfield side of the property is actually, I think, about 12 feet down to the grade level. But again, there's that buffer piece of property owned by the city, and I could see planting, you know, a nice extension of the park that exists to the south, a nice extension of landscaping and trees, and really minimize the impact for the residents on the Richfield side. And then we thought, with the investment in the assisted-living building, we could really develop the landscape and make pathways around the property. I'd like to have a sidewalk connection that actually gets to the parkway, to the park system and beyond, and out to York Avenue, and make what is currently just a lot of open, nice-looking, open green space, make it more functional and usable. What we would do, someone mentioned the idea of, you know, would the gazebo be replaced? And what we were thinking is the east side of the assisted-living building would have a courtyard space and a covered or three-season porch area, so that you could go from the 12-story building, cross the skyway, through the assisted-living building, and have an outdoor space that's connected to the assisted-living building. So there would be a lot of well-developed indoor/outdoor space. We're very interested in having a healthy lifestyle promoted as far as possible for residents. I think I covered most of our thinking about this, so I'd be happy to take questions.
Before I ask for my fellow commissioners, one question that comes to mind for me, again, harkening back to our experience with 7500 York, is the notion of the ancillary building, that it be, that people might rotate in and out of it, or are you thinking that that's more permanent?
I think it would be more of a permanent relocation and transition.
And would it be, would the intent be for that to be, you know, that the first priority would go to people who are in the existing building, or is it just a separate standalone kind of environment?
It would be open to the marketplace, but with 264 residents adjacent, we're thinking that, you know, you could almost end up with an immediate full list of 76 units and.
But to be clear, you're talking, I mean, is it targeted for memory care specifically?
Some of the units, we're, we're thinking there would be three levels of care in the assisted-living building. There would be some memory care, and then two levels of private apartment for assisted-living, and then even more complex assisted-living and memory care. So we're thinking of the 76 units, there might be a three-way split in the unit type.
So you're trying to cover the full spectrum?
Yes, exactly. We'll be doing a little more market study and analysis to arrive at that.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Platter.
Not necessarily for the applicant, but just, so Carrie, how, with this bordering on the city of Richfield, how does that work for comments from that side, or how would that come into play with the residents there? Just curious, notification and things.
They would be sent notices well through the city of Richfield. Any project that we've had along that Richfield border, we've had quite a bit of Richfield participation in the process.
Okay.
Commissioner Carr.
I actually like the fact that you've separated the buildings, but I was wondering if you'd looked at any other designs? As far as the style or the imagery on the addition? Well, yeah, the addition right now is a detached building connected by a skyway. Did you consider any other designs, maybe attached to the current building? Just curious what you may have considered. I do like this separate, it makes it more interesting, but. What we were thinking is that the second floor of the 12-story building has dwelling units all the way around and windows all the way around, so we wanted to hold back from that edge so that we wouldn't lose any units in the existing building. The skyway itself will, will result in the loss of one unit in the existing building on the second floor. We'll have to break through near the elevator core. So it was, it was a matter of, you know, how do you add a building of some size without losing units and windows on the existing building, so. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm just curious, in terms of the populations that you were going to have, or you will have occupying these buildings, how that impacted the design, the design choices that you had? For example, you know, Commissioner Carr was referring to the possibility of having, as opposed to two buildings, attaching it to the existing building. Does that have anything to do with the population in terms of what their needs are, and how you might segregate them within the overall, you know, combination of buildings?
No, I don't think it is. I think it really is kind of just a physical connection issue, and leaving, it was also our thought that it would be best to leave the vehicular circle drive that goes all around the existing building, rather than, you know, having to extend anything further. Preserve the green space to the east, let the vehicles continue to, including fire trucks to go through and under that skyway, so you have good access to the perimeter of both buildings.
So it sounds like, if I'm understanding this correctly, that whatever comments we might have really wouldn't have much bearing or impact or influence in terms of the population itself?
No, no. And I wanted to also just mention that the sketch plan design concept we have really was a matter of sketching something out, and I, I liked the idea. I heard consideration about how does the imagery connect to the existing building? What do you do to make it look like a campus, rather than two disparate properties? So that will definitely be the first thing on our agenda if we, if we think that it's a feasible concept.
Commissioner Potts.
A couple of comments. I think overall, I appreciate the design and the site plan work that you've done. I think that's all good, and in fact, I like the residential form of the new building as sort of a transition between the Richfield neighborhood and the existing building, and separating it, I think is a nice way to do it. The request for increased density, of course, is pretty dramatic. One thing I would like to see when you come back is something that's fairly specific in terms of the sustainability goals you can offer in exchange for us granting this increase in density, and a couple of thoughts on that. One, of course, my, my personal favorite is a LEED certification. It's a proven third-party endorsement of many different sustainable issues, and something that the city can track. We don't have any requirements for that, and I think the, sort of the next step back other groups have done is pursue energy efficiencies enrolling in the, in Excel's program, where you measure your, I'm sure you're familiar with that.
Yes, yeah.
You measure your efficiencies compared to state code. A lot of people come before us and say they've enrolled in the program, which is great, but only step one. I think it'd be nice to hear specifically what your goals are in terms of beating the state code by a certain percent. Additionally, you referred to retrofitting the existing building and its exterior envelope as well as dealing with the new one. To hear on both of those would be a nice way for us to track, because sometimes it's hard to tell the sustainable differences between a green roof or stormwater management or energy efficiency. We have a hard way to, we don't have any good numbers for sort of comparing those, but I think the energy efficiency would be a good way to do it, so.
That's, that's, I fully support that, absolutely. And in fact, it makes me think on the existing building, one of the things we're doing on the exterior wall, not the brick portions, but the aggregate panels and the windows will be replaced with much higher energy-performing windows, and we're adding a layer of insulation to the aggregate panel area, which is woefully inadequate when it was built 35 years ago. So it'll, we should be able to get some very immediate and dramatic information from that, the before and after with that exterior wall work.
I agree, and so the, the request is to come back and let us understand how much better.
Good, okay.
And compared to what?
Commissioner Platter.
Just kind of follow-up on the density comment. So if the numbers are correct, this would essentially set the new standard for density in the city. So I would ask, and when you come back, is what does the, what does the city get out of this, or what are you proposing to offset for that density? You know, one of the things would be energy efficiency, and, you know, landscaping could go in, but what is, you know, kind of a comprehensive list of what the city would actually, we're granting you something, what are you, what are you getting us back? You know, and that could be bike paths or a throughway, or, you know, other things that are happening there. You know, is there a pedestrian way from Richfield across in there or something, too? Just, just some thoughts. I know there's that bike path in the back, but does it, how does that intertwine through that whole area? So I would ask when it comes back, what, what benefits the city to for that, if, if in fact we were to grant something density, because it'll, it'll be an issue as it goes through as to, again, setting the new standard, and then other projects come in. again, setting the new standard, and then other projects come in and, you know, how that goes.
Yeah.
It's kind of an arms race at some point or could be, so, thanks.
Commissioner Forrest?
Well, I am pleased to see that you're working with an existing building and upgrading it, not just letting it sit there. So I guess I would speak to sustainability of a different kind, and that's the adaptability of use over time of a building. And it seems like the new building will have different types of units based on different levels of care.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so just keep that in mind, that what if that building is no longer used for senior housing at some point and how adaptable it can be.
Good point.
I'll be looking at that somewhat.
Commissioner Schroder?
I don't have any issues with the use or the density. And I was curious to know about just kind of the, how you look at this site along the expanse of York Avenue as kind of an urban experience. And my perception of this side of our city is that we have a bunch of really large buildings that are set back as kind of islands surrounded by green. And it was probably a, kind of a cool idea in 1970. And we've been working very hard over on France Avenue, not too far from here, to try and establish a more pedestrian-centered corridor and where we can to try and bring development closer to the street to encourage pedestrian activity. If I compare France Avenue to York Avenue, the opportunities for creating a pedestrian environment are much greater on York Avenue, but we don't even have a sidewalk connection between your building and the street.
Right.
We also have a very large building here that's separated from the street and another large, we have the smaller building to the north, a larger building to the south, the library, and eventually we get up to Walgreens, CVS, where we worked very hard to try and bring development up closer to the street to kind of foster a sense for this part of the Southdale area of a greater sense of kind of pedestrian connection to the street. And I'm curious, given that, and maybe knowing that that's our direction for this part of the city, is to try and foster greater pedestrian activity in the entirety of Southdale, Southdale area, is there a way that this building could actually work as an insertion on the other side of the building where its scale could actually help moderate the scale of this large plain 1970s Hulk and create better connections to the street and foster some of the other goals we have as a city?
You know, actually, we looked at that, I would admit somewhat briefly, when we started just sketching site plan options, a front yard addition. But when I did a quick study of the required front yard setback and the distance we'd want to keep from the existing building, it left a really narrow little strip and it wasn't wide enough to have a double-loaded corridor building, but...
Well, I think what I'd offer is that as we looked, as we've looked at other sites, we have found ways to allow CVS to move very close to the street. It's in a different zoning district.
Maybe a different...
Yeah, the front yard setback, I think, it's the front yard setback set up because this building is tall, the existing building is tall.
Yeah, yeah.
If we have another, another building in front, I would rather look at how we can use the new building to help moderate the scale of the building that's requiring the greater setback.
That's definitely worth a look. Yeah, I like that idea too.
And if you notice the context, you know, just to the south is kind of the east-west spine of the promenade. John, several blocks to the north, we're at 69th and York where there's going to be a new residential, market rate residential apartment buildings on that corner. We have had some discussions about how do you, you know, there's going to be more pedestrian activity and how do we kind of facilitate that and let pedestrian activity be part of the transportation mode in this area, even though cars are dominating it now. And so I think you'd probably find us flexible, and we do have a planned unit development tool available as well in the event that, you know, we need flexibility from zoning. And I think you would, you would find there is a theme developing in our, in our reaction to these projects of sustainability and of pedestrian-friendly or multimodal transportation and trying to create more of a streetscape that includes more than just automobiles. You know, the one thing I would add to it is on the other side, you are right up against kind of single-family residential in Richfield. And it looks to me, and I'm not tremendously familiar with it, but it looks to me like that's been a pleasant kind of neighbor place to have with the gazebo and the green space and the like. And so to the extent it's not feasible to do the kinds of things that Commissioner Schroder is talking about, and even if it is, I, you know, I'd invite you to think about that connection and how you interface with that single-family residential area in a way that, you know, especially if we're going to be increasing density, how do you make that a win-win for them so that that's an even nicer amenity for their neighborhood? Commissioner Platterner?
Kind of that point, connectivity, and I was thinking about a little bit more, you know, again, you go there and pedestrians not welcome, right, when, along this whole area?
Right, right.
And, you know, is there a way, because I think the library is one lot to the north, right? Is that directly next to it? It's one lot to the north, right? And then the Y is basically one lot to the south. You know, is there a way, and I don't hate to put the burden on you so much, but how do you make that connectivity between those two spots, at least a starting point to get to library and the Y, you think there'd be, you think there'd be a large amount of back-and-forth usage, which I'm assuming people actually just drive there right now because there is no way to get there except trending down York Avenue. So something to, you know, approach...
And I guess I would, on that point, I would add, you know, with the corridor, the Commissioner Schroder was talking about, that small, narrow path that's identified by the number 24 on the area hill.
Yeah.
It looks like that's a, that's a convenient kind of avenue to get to the library parcel and if there were pedestrian ways to easily get, I would think it would be a nice amenity for the site if you could be that close to the library and find a safe way to get back and forth and, as well as to that Richfield neighborhood.
Right, right, yeah, a really nice pedestrian or bicycle pathway. Tree, lots of landscaping and tree buffer between the Richfield neighborhood and the new building could be really nice.
Yeah, it could be a nice amenity, it'd be a nice addition. Commissioner Schroder?
I just, and I appreciate if you would look at this, because I think when we moved through the process of trying to create a sketch plan element to our, to our commission, we were looking for people to come to us to challenge us about our ideas too. And it's not just us reacting to things and you trying to find a way to fit into the rules. We have rules, we're going to spend probably an hour tonight talking about how our rules aren't working in residential areas. We might think that our rules are failing us equally well in areas like this, or equally, equally in this area. So I would, I would really appreciate people coming forward with sketch plans to maybe have the safe version, but tell us what's out there to really push the boundaries and challenge us as a city to say this is, these are things that we would encourage you to look at and not have us always be the one pushing you further.
And look beyond the property in question...
Look beyond our rules, yes.
...to see what, how that ripples through the adjacent properties and neighborhoods. Good point.
To that point, like setbacks are, you know, I don't know if you're coming for a PUD on this or what's happening, but there's a flexibility at that point, right? So to your point, if you could blank slate this thing, what would you do? And it may not work, but just looking for other ideas too versus just plopping it in.
I appreciate that little nudge because I thought it was a big leap to go to this density issue, and I thought, okay, if that's, if that's palatable or feasible, we can definitely look at lots of options with that. That would be great. It's good to know.
Other comments? I think you've gotten a pretty good flavor. This is not normally, this is not actually a public hearing, but doesn't look like we have a tremendously full house. If there's folks here who wanted to comment on this, I'd invite you to come on up and share your thoughts. Dylan, you're going to make a second appearance? That's the spirit. You're getting extra, extra credit.
I just think that it sounds like a great idea, and yeah, I would really love to see that, especially seeing as how there's such a high percentage of elderly.
Exactly.
And I think that it would be awesome if it was also much more easily accessible for pedestrians in that general area. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Exactly.
So I just wanted to ask one more question.
Sure.
It sounded, I get the sense that there would be some support, that it would be worth our, going to the next step, that the density issue is not a barrier, that there's some possibility, feasibility with this concept that we should pursue and come back and look at the next step, which we'd love to do. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter? I think I've got a couple of reactions from that.
As I say, I wouldn't rule out density not being an issue. It may be, it may be one that's, that's comfortable amongst some in this group, but we have another group that'll make a final decision, and they may be completely on the other page.
Just from a matter of history and staff may have filled you in on this, there was, well, and actually I think Carrie included it in his introduction, that at least the members of the planning commission who participated in the update of the comprehensive plan in 2008, we did not include an upper-level density limit, but the council chose to impose one as part of the update. So there may be council members who feel differently on that topic. And I think part of what you're hearing here is that if there's some things in exchange for density, then maybe, maybe it's a, maybe that can work in this area and make it a win-win for everybody. Commissioner Platterner?
Let's see, are you taking this sketch plan to the council then next, or, okay, all right.
Yes.
Don't skip that step.
Never. I never recommend that.
So I think, I think what you're hearing from us is while we're, you know, we're not saying density is, is just going to go away as an issue, there are ways to make an increase in density more palatable for the city. And I think, you know, you'll find that at least some of us are willing to be persuaded if the right kind of setting comes along.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just add, this is probably a good time to bring it up because it's an official submittal now, you'll be considering the same issue at your next planning commission meeting with the 6500 France that was a medical building?
Do you have three meetings?
Yes, you're gonna, you're gonna have a fourth and a fifth and...
They're starting over, aren't they?
Yes, they're gonna, they would like to ask for consideration to repurpose that building to senior housing and also a facility with transitional care. And the density that they're looking at is along the same lines that we're talking about here this evening. So this is, this is an issue that we definitely will be tackling here with planning commission and council and possibly an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Well, Carrie, I do like the idea that you brought up earlier of differentiating between all ages and senior because there are different things and how the trips are different, you know, it's a different animal. How do we, is there a way to put some bounds on both of those versus just somewhere in a common spot?
And I know in 2008, part of the density conversation was also related to height, but it was, it was related to kind of infrastructure capacity in the Southdale area. And those who were in favor of limiting the density were concerned that, you know, we might not have the, the infrastructure from a variety of perspectives, whether it be, you know, sewer streets or traffic or the like. And so if it is senior and it's going to put, for instance, from a traffic perspective, less, less pressure with higher density, maybe that's an example of a rationale you could argue for why density, increased density is bad.
Yeah, that's exactly the reasoning why the council put that maximum on there when we were looking at the infrastructure in Southdale area.
And I don't know, you know, I mean, one of the things on our work plan is to start thinking about the 2018 update of the comprehensive plan. And one of the things we should be gathering information on is whether that infrastructure limitation that we were concerned about in 2008 has come to pass or whether, whether the terrain has changed at all. But that's not necessarily your issue, just bigger context. Commissioner Forrest, did you want to chime in?
Just regarding the senior housing in general, I'm kind of dismayed when you say that's what they're thinking of for, for that location because quite frankly, now this project that was just before us, this is already an established senior residence, and they're talking about transitioning as far as needs for levels of care and, but I think the richest neighborhoods are those that are integrated in ages as much as possible. So I'm not strongly in favor of, of just more and more senior residence buildings out there. And I, I think it takes away some choices from the seniors as well at that point. And I also, I think there's really a trend where assisted living is a cash cow, and there's a lot of people doing it because it's financially a positive thing for them. So I am, I am concerned about that, about that. And also the reason I supported the, the one building there is because it was, helped to define a medical campus versus a residential area. So it'll be interesting to see that one come forward.
I might as well give you a little more detail rather than just saying it's senior housing. It would be affiliated with the hospital through Ebenezer, so it would be a Fairview affiliated project. There would be a skyway that would connect it. The building that you see, that you approved, the five, that doesn't change. So it's essentially that same building up on the street. It's the parking ramp is being replaced with housing on the back because we only need about 150 parking spaces as opposed to 500 with the medical use. So all the parking would be underground. There's, the footprint is actually, you'll see this next time, but the footprint is actually smaller, there's more green space. So there's some synergy and there's also some transitional care for those who have surgeries either at Twin City Orthopedic or Fairview Hospital. There would be some transitional beds there as well, people that might be able to, need to stay for two nights or two months. So there's some hospital extension as well.
They proposing a skyway to the residential building to the south or the other way?
Yeah, it would be, it would be, I think we looked at it in one of the original...
Over to the parking structure?
Yeah, it would be over to the parking structure.
Which would allow them to get to the hospital?
Yes.
Great ideas have staying power. All right. Ms. Sirmak, thank you for your presentation and conversation. We'll look forward to seeing you back after you've had a chance to work it through with your, your clients and with staff. So that brings us to item number 7B, zoning ordinance update, residential development. This, Carrie, I don't know if you want to introduce this. This is the latest chapter in our ongoing effort to review the, our zoning ordinance in light of residential redevelopment. And for those who are just catching up, we have been working on this issue since probably late October. Commissioners Platterner, Potts, and Forrest did a terrific job of engaging the public as, as well as the development community in some discovery about what the issues were. The council has been working on a parallel track on some construction management rules and ordinances. And at our last meeting, or two meetings ago, we identified a list of items that we thought we should be taking a look at in the zoning code. And then at our last meeting, had some discussions and gave direction to staff on language or at least policy direction we'd like to see on those items. And Carrie and his staff has put together a, some text on that, and so we're going to go through that tonight. The goal is to move either, move at a future meeting, and I think we should talk about when we want that meeting to be after we have this substantive discussion, but the goal is to set this up for a public hearing with specific proposed ordinance language changes, at which point we would take formal comment from the public and then we would make recommendations on these items to the city council. So Carrie, I think tonight, if you can give us kind of an overview of the changes that you've made language-wise, and then I'd like to go through those. We had those as a list the last time, I think there were 12 items on that list, and it looks like you've incorporated them into a single ordinance. If you can just kind of walk through those with us. And I would encourage, as we did at our last meeting, kind of an informal interchange here. Let's not worry about formalities of being called on, et cetera. I'd like to just kind of have a discussion... a discussion. And maybe even if you just want to stay there, Carrie?
Sure.
And we can walk through, as you touch on each item, get some thoughts from commission members about whether that's striking the right note, or whether we have to tweak the language a little bit. Commissioner Forrest?
Thanks. Before we start, I just wanted, I would like to make it clear that the ordinance that the city council recently passed regarding construction management, that that was not something that originated from the planning commissioner from our committee. We gathered a lot of information. We got a lot of comments that relate to and that were, I think, used by staff and the council in formulating that. But there seems to be some confusion in, you know, what we did and how far we took things in that area. And we did not make any recommendations to staff or city council regarding the comments received. And I just wanted that to be clear so that if people are trying to follow the process. And because we did solicit a lot of information on a number of topics.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. You know, at least from my perspective, as, as you all went through the process, the, what emerged was the fact there were kind of two different areas of concern. One was the regulations and whether the regulations were serving us properly. But the second was just the experience that people in a high redevelopment area were having with a constant state of construction and what that was doing to quality of life. And it's really that second area that the council took on. It emerged from the public process that, that you initiated. And I think they kind of grabbed that along with staff and, and took off with it. But our charge, since we're, our real role is to be reviewing the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. And so what we're looking at now are amendments to the zoning code related to setback and building height and issues like that.
I think maybe the part of the point you're making is we didn't, we're not, what we're doing right now, or what we did before, we, we weren't soliciting public comments or going through a hearing process on the ordinance, right? I think that's what you're saying? You know, that didn't come through the planning commission as how this is coming through?
Right. But because we held those public, you know, open houses in order, and there was website, feedback, whatever, I'd, I've gotten some comments that people are, they perceived that we had initiated that ordinance change. And we did collect the comments and we took them very seriously. And I think that's, those are things we need to keep in mind as well as we go forward with the actual zoning code changes we may make. But that we were, I guess, being tagged with raising fees and doing a lot of other things. And we were outside of that. So it's really hard for us to even respond and, you know, if we aren't clear on what the, what went into the decisions that were made. So, but I also don't want people to feel like their opinions were discounted because they came and shared that information and then we didn't, we didn't do anything with it. And actually, I think that it was probably of use to the city as they went forward as well.
Yeah, that ordinance was outside of the zoning ordinance. So that was.
Absolutely.
For council. Before I get into this, just for timing standpoint, I guess what, what we were thinking and based on that outline that we talked about a couple of meetings back, that we would talk about this draft at this meeting, suggest some revisions. Tonight, we'd come back at our next meeting, have another draft, go through some of that. And then your second meeting in May, hold the public hearing? That's kind of the timeframe that it.
And Carrie, what kind of lead time do we need to publish notice on that?
Ten days prior to that public hearing.
So could we wait to publish the notice until after our next meeting, until after the first meeting in May? Or would there not be enough time?
There wouldn't be enough time.
Okay. Cause you have to, you got a one week lag time with the newspaper.
Yeah, it has to get into the paper 10 days prior. So we have to.
So I guess one of the questions, oh, would it be the next day? Oh, yeah. Because that'd be two weeks. Well, no, you'd only get.
You wouldn't get in that week's paper though.
You'd get in the following.
Get in the following week, which.
Before council. Is that what we're talking about?
It wouldn't be 10 days before planning commission.
But you'd want to have the notice for the public hearing in front of us and in the council. So I think before we finish tonight, I think we should make a decision about whether we want to try and have the public hearing at that second meeting in May because staff will.
If we need more time.
Right. If we need more time, we can postpone it. But it sounds like you're going to need to know tonight whether we're going to try and hit that second meeting in May as a public hearing, or whether we're going to do the first meeting in June as a public hearing.
Yeah.
And then once we do the public hearing, then we can move it on to the council. And our goal, I think, was to by the end of June, get them something.
Or you wouldn't even have to move it on. You know, if something comes out of that public hearing, you could.
Right. Take another meeting.
Continue to the next meeting.
Okay. That's good, good note on the timing.
Can I just make a suggestion how we go through this? I don't know what other people feel, but should we go through the summary versus the detailed language first and, or?
I think it might make it a little easier if people are watching to kind of.
Yeah.
Get their arms around the.
Because there are some details that were, well, there's a lot of details. They're important, but I think Carrie did a pretty good job of summarizing it here too.
Yeah, that was my intent.
And that was, and getting the flavor for it really, right? I mean.
If we're going to do that, I guess what I would suggest is maybe we use your, your summary and then on that topic, drill directly to the language that you suggested. So that we're taking one kind of topical area at a time. And I think people who are following will find it easier to understand the issues we're wrestling with. Does that sound?
Yeah, that's.
A good approach?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And it generally follows, you know, the first bullet point goes to the first part of the code.
Right. I mean, I know there's going to be some places where you'll have to jump a little bit, but if you can, so maybe if you can introduce each one with the kind of summary and the policy point, and then, and then we can look at the language that's implementing it.
Sure. So the first one deals with the retaining walls, drainage and site access issue. So the attempt here is to make the drainage regulations clear, who's reviewing it, the specifics that we need for the review, for the city engineer. Retaining walls are required to be shown on the grading plans that are submitted as part of a building permit application. Retaining walls that are taller than four feet require a, a building permit. That's current practice now. It's put into code here. And we're also suggesting the setback that we had talked about before, three feet in this case.
Weren't we also talking about requiring a landscape plan with items? Where did, did you, was that in here somewhere? I guess I didn't see it. Cause we talked about that with potential, you know, smaller berms and things could make a pretty big difference with drainage, kind of after the fact. Somebody modified.
Require a landscape plan with a.
With the building plans, weren't we?
You know, we had.
Or grading.
We had an application recently where we were concerned that the landscape plans didn't.
Didn't necessarily show where what was going to happen because someone brought it up earlier that you can have a grading plan, but then landscaping plan modifies it. So, you know, you could lose.
We don't require any kind of permits with, with landscaping. It goes a bit beyond like the conditional use permit. Yeah, we should have had that landscape plan as part of that. But this is just a regular building permit someone's pulling.
Okay. So the one that we, the recent application we had where we were concerned was that it didn't have any level of detail at the level where we were going to have our last look at it.
Right.
But that was a CUP application.
Right.
Okay.
But still, weren't we concerned on any project as far as the grading and what happens with the landscaping? Cause it could affect it quite dramatically when they come in and landscape, you know, the grading plan is basically assuming it's grass, right? And there's usually a landscaping plan that could come in later and block flows or do something.
It's adding another expense to the, for the.
Well, wouldn't they have that, wouldn't they have that already?
No.
Landscaping plan?
Not necessarily.
But they do have a grading plan. Those are going to be two different things. There's a grading plan at that front end, right?
Right.
Which is really going to be relevant. I mean, I get what you're saying, Mike, that the.
What's the fitness condition? I guess what I'm getting at.
Sure. You could have, you could have landscaping that would interfere, I guess, with the grading or the drainage pattern.
Doesn't the city engineer approve the?
The drainage plan.
Drainage plans?
Not the landscaping, that's.
No, not the landscaping, but the drainage.
That's where.
But from an engineering perspective, the drainage overall plan is supposed to be reviewed by the city engineer.
Correct. But I'm just saying the landscaping plan could make some pretty large modifications that, which would have no review at that point.
Yeah, let me take a shot at an example. I mean, if, if we, if we're showing a four foot retaining wall, then you're in for the full blown permit and review. But if you're doing some sort of grading of the, of your land short of that, three feet, six inches, and then a landscape plan, is there a hole in the ordinance, I guess, that would, that would result in water getting redirected off the property sign?
I'm wondering, I'm wondering too if we, if this would have any teeth regarding landscaping is done at any point of time on any, in any property, or if we want to try to establish something that just prohibits altering the drainage flat out. I'm not sure how much this just applies to building a new home or a major remodel, but, but in general that we, you know, homeowners should not be altering the landscape in order to divert water off their property onto their neighbors.
Well, that may be one way to do it, is that the landscaping plan cannot alter the drainage or grading plan.
Well, I, I think the language that Carrie's got here, you know, on drainage, existing draining patterns, drainage patterns shall not be altered to redirect water to adjacent properties. No person shall obstruct or divert the natural flow of runoff so as to harm the public health, safety or general welfare. Surface water runoff shall be properly channeled into storm sewers, watercourses, ponding areas or other public facilities. All provisions for drainage, including storm sewers, sheet drainage and swales shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to construction or installation. So it seems to me that deals with both the construction situation and a post-construction, there's a prohibition against the drainage change. So if you were to do landscaping after the fact, it wasn't part of the building permit, you're still prohibited from this.
Well, I'm just concerned.
By changing the draining pattern.
Yeah, I'm just concerned. I mean, I think too, I think it applies broadly the way it's written, and I like that. However, my concern is how, how can it be enforced and what kind of teeth can it have? Is there anything, or should there be something similar perhaps in nuisance ordinances or something like that? Just, I don't know what's more enforceable. And if there's a concern about landscaping potentially changing drainage patterns as, I'm just looking at the, you know, if we, if that's a goal of ours, then we want to make sure that there is, you know, there are some teeth. Cause this, this you could kind of wiggle around. I think it's nicely written and it's broad, but somebody could arguably wiggle around it a little bit more because it isn't, say, it's not a clear thou shalt not at any point in time. It's, you're not going to go looking in the zoning ordinance for a lot of that.
I guess I'm not sure what it is that it doesn't. So are you worried about landscaping after the fact?
Well, as Commissioner, as Commissioner Platter said, landscaping after the fact could alter the drainage and divert water onto somebody else's property. If you're landscaping your property, or if you're a neighbor with a problem, are you going to go to the zoning code necessarily to look for that? Are you going to go to the nuisance section of the code to look for that? I'm, I'm not feeling very strongly one way or the other, but I just wanted to bring it up. And it's something that if council's concerned about it, they could pursue it further too.
So probably, I mean, if we do landscaping, I mean, what if there's not a, you're not doing any kind of project. It's not a remodel. It's, you're not doing anything to your house. But you decide you're going to, you know, put new sod in the front yard and you're going to grade as part of that? What, what happens then? Do we do, do we have any role in that?
We don't.
And are, and do we want to have any role in that?
That's, that's what I'm wondering. I don't think, I don't know if we necessarily want it here, but, or, or even after new construction, you know, even if it's shortly after the fact, either way, it doesn't require a permit. So it really, and it is kind of outside of our scope, I think too. But if, if, it might be something, if people on smaller lots or whatever are concerned about it, if it's something, it might be something that the council would want to consider in the future is all I'm saying.
I think the way it would be enforced is, say, a new home is built, they, they've complied with this new regulation, provided their grading drainage plan. It was reviewed by the engineer and approved. Then a year or two later, they come in, put in landscaping and it causes a problem for the neighbor. They would typically call us. It'd be a complaint basis. City engineer would go out, take a look at the approved grading plan, see that there's a problem being caused and.
Right. If it changed what the draining was.
I mean, that, yeah, I just was trying to make sure there's a direct connection between that, if you will.
So you all have some.
Well, that seems to be the bulk of it. I mean, I'm not saying that's the only thing, but that's, that's when the huge modifications usually occur. I mean, the house is going up a foot.
Right. Where the grading is going to be changed.
Grading is going to be changed. I mean, you're typically not changing grade that much in existing condition, at least for smaller lots. There's just nowhere to go with it. But a new home could automatically be up a foot or whatever and change them quite substantially.
I guess on this, one of the things that I would like to see us add to the language on number one is in that last sentence that talks about shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to construction or installation. I would add a phrase that provides to ensure that the requirements of this paragraph are satisfied. I think there's a lot of places where we talk about the city engineer reviewing it, but we don't really give him standards that we're asking him to make sure he's enforcing. And I want to make it clear that this, you know, we've had a lot of trouble with kind of the urban legend that you're not supposed to increase the rate of, of runoff to your neighbors when there didn't appear to be anything. And I like the clear language that says, you know, that runoff shall be properly channeled into storm sewers, watercourses, ponding areas or other public facilities.
I would, I would also suggest that last sentence where it says prior to construction installation, I would say prior to getting the building permit issued.
Yeah, that's probably prior to.
Cause that's, that's your kind of drop dead for city approval at that point. That would, that would put it all in building permit driven.
Yeah, Carrie, is that, is that the normal kind of course of things? Is a city engineer getting it before the building permit sign off happens? Then I think, I think.
It's not what it says here, so.
I think that makes sense then. Instead of construction or installation, to put something in that talks about before issuance of the building permit.
That's a good catch. Cause that language that isn't highlighted, that's existing code.
Okay.
Well, here's our chance.
Mike, Michael?
Can I ask a question about what we mean by drainage patterns? Because you referenced something about the myth of not, what we do with drainage patterns. Drainage patterns to me are three things. There's the direction of flow, or where it actually moves from one property to another. There's the rate of flow and there's the quantity of the flow. Are we talking about every one of those? Are we talking just about some of them? I'm curious what the engineering standard would be. To me, I would say that you can increase the rate of discharge from the property. The quantity will probably change if we're doing development because you may have more hard covered redevelopment. So there may be more flow off of the site, but we shouldn't be allowing to discharge off the site at a greater rate than what it is in, before the development. And because it's discharging potentially in the existing condition onto another property, it should continue to be discharged at that same location, not at a new location.
But at the same rate, not at a greater rate?
At the same rate.
I think that's, you're right. I mean, that's the issue is what if you have a natural circumstance where it is discharging to your neighbor, but then you bring it in and you basically just have a whole lot more volume and a whole greater rate. And that's how it ends up in their basement.
The, the way it's written right now is that the drainage patterns, people might interpret that as just the place where it's flowing. And they may not change that, but the rate at which water's coming off of the site could be changing dramatically. And that's where problems occur. There's, there is an issue about the quantity of water, but that's more easily addressed once we address rate of flow.
So should we change existing drain, drainage patterns to refer instead to the direction and rate?
I, I would be more comfortable with that because it, it controls what, what we can control with drainage patterns better than just suggesting it's a direction.
And so you, if you had, for instance, a direction that was going to a neighboring property, you wouldn't have to change that, but you might have, you could change that and run it to the public storm sewer instead.
Correct.
But another option would be to engineer something on the site that would allow percolation or holding or something so that the rate only happened at the same rate.
You would hold it and release it at a slower rate through rain gardens or.
Sure.
French drain or some other method. Rain barrels. There's lots of, there's lots of ways we can control it more than just directing it over, overland onto a neighbor's property.
Is that, is that resonating for people? Carrie, do you follow in what we're?
Generally, are we thinking existing drainage rate and capacity and eliminating?
I'd say rate and direction.
Rate and direction. I think we want to just maybe strike the word pattern.
Right. And replace it with rate and direction.
Yeah.
That's a good catch because it's always the rate really, right? I mean, in generally, it's a lot of. I mean, generally, it's a lot of times the rate versus the direction.
Rate is the big issue, yeah.
The, the city engineer may have different technical terms to apply to it, but conceptually, I think we're covering it, but if, if Wayne has a different way of addressing those terms that are more standard in the industry, maybe that will be helpful to us.
Okay.
All right, we good on that?
Then, then we're omitting quantity completely? Because, in the language, because...
Yep.
We don't do anything right now to change the quantity of discharge from a site, even on commercial sites, they're allowed to, we encourage infiltration, we encourage retention, but I don't know that we actually require them as, as a city, we go to the Watershed District for those decisions, but we don't do anything with that. So I'm not sure if all of a sudden, on a, what seems like a residential basis, we would establish control over the quantity of runoff.
And I think it might be, you know, if you've got more hard cover, you're going to have more quantity, aren't you?
Mm-hmm.
You will, you will have more.
Quantity, but like, like we were saying, there's, there's other ways we can control that.
Right.
But we don't, we don't regulate that on any site that I'm aware of.
Because what we're really concerned about is the impact on the neighboring site.
Correct.
And that's really about how quickly the water...
That's right.
How much water per hour...
Yes.
Goes on to the neighboring site, if it's an existing direction. So this would prohibit channeling, making new directional drainage...
Correct.
...to those neighbors. And if there was existing directional drainage, it would prohibit increasing the rate of it.
That's right, yes.
And that's, I think, what we're trying to accomplish.
What if the existing channels are adequate now, but with the increased quantity, it becomes a really, an incredible burden on the neighbor? I mean, then there's, there's nothing here to address. I'm thinking of smaller lots, if there's a, you know, a change in the hardscape enough that all of a sudden the quantity does increase significantly into an existing directional pattern.
I think, I think what, what I hear us saying is, the quantity isn't, if you, you can manage the quantity on-site so that...
But should the neighbor have to, should the neighbor have to manage that increased quantity as a result of the one project? That's what I'm concerned about. All of a sudden, there's a, you know, an existing pond, let's say mud puddle, whatever, a low spot in the yard, even with the rate, because of the soil or whatever, it isn't raining right, but it's on the neighbor's yard, and they're the ones who are being negatively impacted because of it. And I don't know if...
But I think we have a technical issue about whether quantity matters or not.
Exactly.
And so maybe as part of this, we need to just hear from the city engineer about, you know, whether it's in person, or Carrie, through you, whether it's good enough to address rate without addressing quantity.
I think there's, there's two ways to look at this, first of all, we don't control that, because we don't deal with that in, on any of our, we defer all of that quantity regulation back to the Watershed District. And I think we also have other ways of moderating quantity of stormwater generated by how we deal with stormwater, or, I'm sorry, how we deal with hard, hard surface. And we have limitations, and we'll talk more about that tonight, but we're not, we might go from 20 to 30 percent, that would be a big jump on a residential site, but we're, you know, in most cases, we're talking about going from 20 to 22 percent, or 25 to 28 percent. We're not talking about magnitudes of difference in generating, generation of stormwater runoff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the way it's written right now is that we're really talking about direction, though, not rate, because the concept is, is that existing drainage patterns are not going to be diverted to adjacent properties. That's a directional issue, in that you're not supposed to be diverting runoff to your next door neighbors. That doesn't, I mean, if you don't divert, the rate isn't really an issue. So I'm not sure rate does, is it, maybe it's a separate concept, but I'm not quite sure how we would deal with it. You see where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I, I understand that, there's still an issue with rate of discharge, because we could be, you know, on a, on a larger scale, we could be overtaxing our public systems by dumping more water into it quickly. That's where I, you know, it's, we're talking now from going from a small scale to a large scale. I'm, I'm most particularly concerned, not about what we're discharging onto streets or other, the kind of public conveyances of water, I'm more concerned about what we're doing to neighbors, because many neighbors do have existing conditions where my water's flowing onto somebody else's property, and we don't want to, we don't want to make that condition worse. We want to maintain those conditions, or, or find ways to improve it, which I think, Kevin, that's what you were suggesting, that if we can find ways to get it to a public water conveyance, pipe or street, a curb, gutter, whatever, that's better.
And that would be an option they could pursue.
That would be an option, yeah.
If, if the rate is going to increase, they could either figure out engineering ways to prevent the rate from increasing by slowing down through ponding, or French drains or the like.
Correct.
Or you could run it, you could change the direction and run it to the public storm sewer system.
Okay, so then, it would say something like existing drainage direction and rate shall not be altered to redirect water to adjacent properties, or increase the rate of flow from the existing rate of flow to adjacent properties.
Yeah, that'd be fair.
Good all that, Carrie?
Or increase the rate of flow at the end of that sentence.
Or shall not increase the rate of flow to adjacent properties, where there's, I guess, existing drainage to that adjacent property currently.
Well, and I think it says that by saying existing drainage rate and direction shall not be altered.
Yeah, it was when you get into redirecting the water, you have to get the concept of the, the rate of the flow.
So you might want to split that into two sentences and just make it clear that the direction, rather than try to, you know, wordsmith it precisely here, I think, I think what we need to do is do a little bit of massaging of the highlighted language there to make it clear that we're, if there's existing direction, that's fine, but you can't increase the rate, and if you're going to change the direction, you can't introduce new direction onto your neighbor's property. You could change direction to go to the public storm sewer system, but you're shaking your head down.
No, different conversation.
We're just looking at, you could just say rate and direction, you know, is, not be altered to redirect water to adjacent properties or otherwise negatively impact the adjacent properties or something like that.
Yeah, that's the intent of that second section there.
All right, so let's work that a little bit, and we can bring that back, or else we're going to be here until three o'clock in the morning. All right, so retaining walls, comments on retaining walls? Go ahead, jump in.
Just the first sentence, retaining walls must be shown on a grading plan, is that retaining walls of any height, I'm assuming?
That's a good question.
Because later on, we say that retaining walls taller than four feet require specific building permit, so I'm assuming the first sentence is retaining walls of any height, we might want to state that, just so that there's no confusion?
All retaining.
Or all retaining.
Well, that would help go to my landscaping concern, because...
It's the hardscaping that's the issue, yeah. I'm, I'm a little concerned that we, you know, we say retaining walls greater than four feet need a building permit, you know, the, the kind of nightmare scenario we had here was the, the guy who goes out his side door and has the, you know, 12-foot retaining wall staring him in the face. This would certainly permit that, you know, you'd have to go three foot further back, and you'd go 12 feet. I'd like to see something that would require terracing every however many feet, I don't know whether that's every four feet, that you got to go back another three feet, or some, so we don't just have these sheer walls of higher than a certain amount.
As we regrade a lot.
Right, so if you're going to do a retaining wall more than eight feet...
So you have a max height on the retaining wall?
Yeah, maybe it's every four feet, you got to move back another three feet.
Yeah. Three foot setback for each...
For each four-foot segment.
Incremental three feet in height.
No retaining wall taller.
Understanding the consequences is that you'd, you'd have some unbuildable lots at that point.
Then there's a variance process that could be as appropriate.
Or you'd have to build differently.
But I think you could argue that they were unbuildable in the first place if it took a 12-foot retaining wall next to your neighbor to make them buildable. They weren't buildable in that fashion.
And I do think those, those extreme examples, we're going to have, that's a perfect variance, you come in, you've got topographical concerns that are, and that gives us an ability to attach some conditions to prevent these kinds of...
Fair enough, yeah.
And to look at the really odd ones.
Right.
Have like a chance to review them.
Because I think what's happening is a lot of these are...
You have a chance to know what's coming in then, right?
Right. And there's a lot of these lots that, you know, it starts out with the garage that's kind of set down from the property, and when the new development comes in, they just decide to try and flatten that. And they use a big retaining wall at one end of the property to maximize, especially on the smaller lots, to maximize the amount of space. Right.
I like, are we going to go with that set, with that setback three feet for every four? I like that.
Let's, let's do that.
Let's try it, and Commissioner Platter, you can, you're, you're mulling it, and maybe it is, and I think a lot of this, we got to get to our final language, we're going to hear some comments from the public, some of us may change our mind and say, this is not the right answer, you know, we're, because I think people have been very good, we got a couple of emails tonight, and we got letters earlier, people are good about trying to point out the consequences of what we're doing, so we'll have an opportunity to listen to that.
So we add this sort of setback approach as a...
I'm not sure we're following exactly where you're trying to go with this.
Right, so...
Draw it out.
Yeah, right. And if we, if we can't make you understand it, how are we going to...
It's four feet, three feet, four feet. You know, if you have an eight-foot wall, think if you have an eight-foot wall, you have a four-foot section, you have to go over three feet, and then you can go up with the four-foot wall.
I'm just, I'm trying to figure how, how you write a regulation for that, though.
In forever incremental four feet in the height of retaining wall beyond the first four feet.
You need to setback another, so you need to setback...
Setback from the lot line?
To me, that setback could be...
No, from the retaining, from the retaining wall.
You can say setback, setback.
Step back, there we go, that's better.
So you're going to go three feet back for every four feet of height? It's almost like, it's almost like our second floor building...
So basically, there's a maximum...
Yeah, we're coming up with another formula here that...
It wouldn't be, it's not so much a formula, it's just, it's just, there's a maximum height to a retaining wall of four feet. Should somebody want to do a retaining wall that's higher than four feet, they do a four-foot retaining wall, move it back three feet, and then do another four-foot retaining wall.
I just wonder what the unintended consequences for a big lot is going to be, like all of West Edina, where we have Indian hills...
Terracing, rolling.
Well, but that's only if they want a retaining wall.
There is this big to build at the top.
It's not saying you can't have hills.
Make your own hill.
I mean, is it...
I see what you're saying.
I'm just wondering, is it...
It works on these smaller lots, but on the bigger lots, then...
But is there, are there that many situations on the bigger lots where they need to impose a retaining wall of that size in order to make it buildable? Okay.
Yeah, driveways?
Sometimes they do it for driveways in those silly lots.
Leaving the backyard as a hill, so you're retaining back there.
So, what's Plan B?
Yeah, fed that up, didn't we?
I think we circled around on that one, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Leave as is.
Leave as is, uh-huh, just like...
On the site access?
Yeah, well, let's leave it for now and think more about that, I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that, I, you know, other than, maybe it's the smaller lots, but for now, let's leave it that way.
Before we jump to site access?
Yep.
I noticed that we're, we're asking for, in area two, for the materials of the retaining wall to be, how's it, we need to demonstrate materials to be used for the retaining wall. What's the purpose behind that?
What, what is your intent with that, Carrie?
Yeah, that, that came from the city engineer, and the concern was boulders versus, you know, knowing exactly what, what that retaining wall's going to be made of.
So the disclosure is made, and then what is it done, what kind of information?
Not being an engineer, I'm not sure what they, what they're going to do with that, but...
Wait, is it really identify the materials, is that what he's trying to...
Yeah, distinguish what kind of a, a retaining wall is going in there.
Yeah, somebody's getting a permit for a four-foot or taller wall, then the engineer in order to evaluate it would need to know how it's being built.
They would know the detail or anything, four feet and greater that needs a building permit. I think his intention here was, so he knows what's going into the smaller.
So that, then he can better evaluate the drainage and all the grading and things like that, that's the purpose, okay.
That's fine, I, I don't have an objection to it, I'm just trying to understand.
I was just...
Site access, any comments on that? Go ahead, go ahead.
It's worded that retaining walls shall not be constructed to prevent pedestrian access from front to rear yards, but there could be other things than retaining walls that prevent access, so I'm wondering if we should not change that wording to say pedestrian access from front yards to rear yards shall not be restricted or something, or, or we could say, no structures or improvements, including, but not limited to retaining walls, shall be constructed to prevent pedestrian access.
Why do you need...
I don't want to limit it just to retaining walls.
Why do you need that first sentence, then, why don't you just, just use the second sentence?
Yeah.
Well, that's true, it's a positive statement instead.
So if there's a fence and the gate is off to the side, if it's still on your property, but it's not direct, or, if there's access in some way, when you say it's along one side of the house... I'm just trying to think if there's any situation where, where there'd be some other reasonable solution that this wording doesn't really fit. That was the only thing.
Yeah, I can rework that.
The one side of a single or double dwelling unit, if it's a different shaped lot, there's gate access into the backyard in some other way, but I like the fact that...
Yeah, I think maybe if we just get rid of that first sentence, yeah.
And then we just have the one sentence, that's what I'm saying.
That's pretty clear.
Cover it then, right?
Yeah, we just have to state in the last sentence that it's from front to rear.
Oh, right.
I, I think the reason I put the retaining wall piece in there, is we see sometimes just a little step down, you know, it could be a one-foot or a two-foot retaining wall, this would eliminate that, so it would be a clear, level, that was my intent.
Why don't we suggest that it's an access for maintenance purposes instead of pedestrians? Because you're right, pedestrians could move up or down steps, what we're trying to do is provide for maintenance access from the front to the rear yard.
Getting the lawnmower from the front to the back.
I have, I have a question, we say it's on one side of a single or double dwelling unit. We had an issue with this because somebody in a single-family home was having to use the neighbor's lot to get into the rear yard of their own, but if we have a double dwelling unit, it doesn't mean that they're not owned by different people, so somebody would have to cross onto their neighbor, neighboring double dwelling unit property to get into the backyard.
Yeah, that's a good point. We'll take that out.
I, I'm concerned about being too restrictive and saying that you have to have just like a clear, flat access that you could wheel something along, because to me, it's not unreasonable, especially on smaller lots perhaps, to have a eight to 12-inch whatever retaining wall, or even a two-foot retaining wall that you can lift your lawnmower down over. I'm just, I'm just concerned about getting too restrictive in that you have to, you know, clear what's potentially a good bike path to your backyard on one side or the other versus, you know, does that...
It's not saying that, it's just saying you can't use retaining walls to prevent maintenance access from front yards to rear yards.
Okay, I was, I maybe goofed up which sentence you were losing there.
Well, I think we're going to, well, we were going to get rid of the first one, but Carrie, I think pointed out that there's some value to the retaining wall.
I think a, a retaining wall would be anything taller than a step, right? Can allow someone to step down into their backyard of a walkout.
Plus, your...
Steps are allowed.
Right, that's what I would propose.
Well, so the question was, it's not just pedestrian access, it's maintenance access, so how are you going to get a lawnmower or other piece of equipment from the front yard to the backyard? It's possible to do that with one...
Access of at least three feet.
But you may have conditions that just, you have to have steps there, so...
Right, fine, that's, but I don't think we have to dictate, you know, how many inches high or wide, but I think the, I think the concept of clear access for maintenance...
How about just...
At least three feet on one side of your dwelling.
Right.
How about just no structure shall prohibit...
Well, that's kind of what we're saying, I mean, that's...
I know, but it'd be just to not try and differentiate, no, no retaining wall or other structure, no retaining wall, fencing, whatever, or other structure shall, you know, prohibit somebody from providing an access way to a rear yard that's a minimum of three feet in width.
Back to my last sentence only.
Well... Well-
If we're gonna get into all those details.
You could just, just get rid of pedestrian in the last sentence, then.
Yeah, you could just simply say, clear access of at least three feet in width is required on one side of a dwelling unit from the front to the rear yard.
Bingo.
Can I just ask one question? Are we doing all this because of that one instance?
You got a problem with that?
I kinda do.
No, there are, there are issues too, though, like Claudia was saying, with air conditioning units, on the one open side, so that they just kinda zip around, you know, onto the neighbor's property to get around the air conditioning units, so there are situations where-
Air conditioners have the five-foot setback.
I just think we're working awful hard to create a rule for something that is one instance where somebody had an issue.
I think we've accomplished it, frankly.
Now, what's ironic with that one, they could've gotten it if they had tore down some big trees. So.
Or if they were just nice to their neighbors, maybe it wouldn't have had an issue too.
So. Shall we move on? All right, we've gotten one of the 11 done.
All right, what's the next one, Carrie?
The next one is, the next one is the biggie, it's the making 25% lot coverage uniform. Now, we did put in a provision that excluded the Edina Heritage Landmark District, essentially the Country Club District. As we've talked about, you know, even six years ago, a lot of these changes end up rendering most, or if not all, of the Country Club District non-conforming. So that's something to consider here, as well as our, the side yard setback regulations that we've, that we'll be looking at.
Why do we want to, I mean, there's tons of things that are non-conforming in, on all these properties, not just, you know, not just lot coverage, so why would we have a different, we don't need a different rule regarding, why would we need a different rule for them versus, you know, the next neighborhood over?
I would argue you do need a different rule because of the fact that you're trying to preserve the historic character of the neighborhood.
Preserve, exactly, so why do you wanna give them the option to build a bigger home on that property necessarily than somebody else could?
They've pretty well already done that.
Exactly, that's what I mean, but if there's new construction, why should they be, why should they get a break in the rules to build a more imposing home in an historic neighborhood than somebody on the same size lot, two streets over? Like over on Maple, why should they, that just doesn't make any sense. That's just, you know, keeping it for the sake of keeping it, if we're gonna change it, that's something that should be uniform.
Same thing, if they have an exception for that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anywhere else to be subject to less rules than the other.
Well, how about the, how about the whole business of not having the 30%? Where are we at on that, do we wanna pursue that?
Well, that's kinda my point, is if, if in fact that we're kind of saying Country Club's a sacred cow here, and, and they have 30, well, that's not equitable to the rest of the city to reduce the lot coverage then. If that's the case.
And in historic districts, it's usually, it goes the other way. You make it, you make things, you keep things more in tune with what the neighborhood historically has been versus granting it now.
Well, you could, I mean, you could probably say the same in terms of non-conformities in other neighborhoods as well. That there's-
Right.
Lot coverage that's 30% already in many neighborhoods.
It's just that it's pulled out for Country Club as a-
That's just because of-
So Carrie has this summary sheet, I kinda hate to propose changes to that, because there's other stuff below it, but we're saying, let's strike the last sentence of the second bullet point, right?
I don't, I'm not saying that, I think if that's truly the case, that Country Club's already all of a-
I guess before, before we talk about whether Country Club should be an exception or not, what I wanna make sure I understand, at least for purposes of teeing this up for a public hearing, is are we prepared to put some language out there that says 25% lot coverage is the maximum? Setting aside for a second whether we're gonna make any exceptions.
What is it, Minneapolis? Or that, is that a combination of FAR?
It's a combination of FAR, so it actually is 50% lot coverage, but FAR makes it 25%.
Okay. So it, it's not totally unreasonable to have a 25% lot coverage limit? I did at one point, and I can't remember where, find an ordinance for another town, that actually did do the 25 and 30 with the 30 on the smaller lots, and I was kinda surprised to see that, so. We aren't completely alone in that.
Well, just even to that point, thinking about it more in other areas of town, I mean, there's, there's a lot that are, would all of a sudden be non-conforming.
A lot of 50-foot lots.
It's not just a couple, it's a huge amount.
But I would recommend that any changes do, we send these over to the Heritage Preservation Board, and the consultant could comment on those as to the impact on the district, because I think it is important to preserve the historic nature of the neighborhood, and so we should be aware of if any of these changes are going to impact the historic neighborhood, the historic district.
But at the same time, I don't wanna have different regulations because of that, that grant them more than the other areas of town.
Well, it's, the exception is a convenient diversion for us from the really difficult question, which is, are we, you know, are we gonna propose some language here, at least for the public hearing, that is going to make it a 25% lot coverage citywide, as opposed to providing a, an exception for lots, for the smaller lots that allow them to go up to 30%?
And I have one question, that when I was reading this, building coverage A subdivision 6A, it says building coverage shall not be more than 25%. So that's the current language, there's no change to that.
No, that's changed.
Pardon me?
That's new language, 25%.
No, well, it's not that, that's existing language.
Well, what, what he's done is-
Okay, I see by taking out the lots.
Yeah, the lots under, yeah, the lot.
Right, Carrie, I mean, just by, it used to be divided into lots of greater than 9,000 and lots of less than 9,000, you're just making it, you took the shortest route to-
I did.
Okay, okay, now I understand.
It basically, yeah, it says 25% citywide.
So Steph-
But also, I don't know, there's also, just people keep in mind is there's a maximum on those size lots too, it's, was it 2250 for the, or 2150, I forget from the footprint? 2250, so essentially that at the top end is 25%.
It's the smaller of those two, right? 2250 or 30%?
You're never gonna have a lot that's getting, a smaller lot that gets more than 25% of a 9,000 square foot lot, so it's 2,0250 or 30%, whichever's less, so incrementally it gets up to 30%, and then if it goes beyond 2,0250 at 30%, you have to stay at 2,0250. So you're slightly under a 9,000 square foot lot, you're never gonna have more-
Yeah, you're never gonna be more than a larger lot.
You're not gonna exceed 25% of a 9,000 square foot.
And if it's a, and if it's a two-story, you can only-
Well, it'd be 4,500 or whatever.
Yeah, I suppose you can get to that. Well, here's my suggestion is, and is that we go ahead and include this for purposes of the public hearing, and out, setting aside for a second the Country Club issue. Although I will say personally, I'm not persuaded that I'm gonna be supportive of it when we get there, but I think we ought to air it out and hear what people have to say on this idea, and then we can make a decision about whether we wanna recommend it to the council or not.
I'd like to know what Steph's opinion is on this, I mean, do you perceive any difficulty in complying with the 25% in, as far as, is it unrealistic in any way? Um, yeah, I do, 5% is a big difference for a smaller lot. You're going to find that most of the new homes that have been built in the past 10 years are going to be non-conforming. Morningside, South Harriet Park, you know, all of the smaller, narrower lots, you're gonna, you are going to force a lot of those properties already into non-conformity. And I'm wondering too, like, okay, I'm the one who keeps pulling up, okay, what about that 40-foot lot? I mean, and then we have this two-car garage requirement on top of it, so that's, I'm wondering, at what point does it become difficult to do that, so that's, that's why I was asking that question.
Just since I'm relatively new.
Well, give me a little history on the, this coverage issue, building coverage issue. Is it, is that, has that been the critical issue, building coverage, or has it been setbacks?
I'll dig the houses.
Everything, height, setback, coverage, closeness to side lot lines, everything. I'm wondering, on top of that, I mean, many municipalities also have limits then, in addition to hard surface coverage overall in a lot, and we had talked about that somewhat in the past. I don't know if that's something we wanna keep in the back of our heads going forward or not.
Well, that would be even a much larger non-conforming piece than, than this, especially if it's lodged in the back.
Okay, I'm confused here, because there's this concern about non-conforming things out there, but you build something new, you, you work with the current zoning code. All those lots are already non-conforming, because they're not 75 feet wide. So going forward, what do we want? I mean, I, maybe I'm missing something here, but why is it a huge issue to change something and all of a sudden, I mean, everything else is grandfathered in, it's only if that's removed completely what can be built there in the future.
Well, part of it, though, is somebody built something last year that was 30%, so they were able to get more value in theory out of their house than if we said something and they only can build a 25% of house, because it's 18% smaller, that's why.
And I think that's the, what's happened over the last five to 10 years, that Chris described, is exactly what we heard in the citizen comments that we're reacting to, that's where all this came from, right?
But, I mean, my own perspective is that what, what we're trying to react to is a, is the kind of bulk, mass scale, and we have so many different kind of dimensions of lots, we might have a smaller 50-foot lot, but it might go back 200 feet. So I don't think 30% or 25% is really what matters, what's kind of mattering is the, is the width and the height. And so I'd rather, you know, tackle the building height and the setbacks, and get rid of this goofy second-story setback issue that we have. I just don't think, I, I just am skeptical about how lot coverage is gonna accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. I think the other tools are more suited to it.
I was kind of drawn along those same lines to one of the comments that was mailed to us, actually by a builder, who said, "I think the reduced ridge height and eliminated side yard wall height are great ideas and should be adopted. These alone should help with a lot of the streetscape issues of concern. Remodels and new homes could be built to blend better in with existing homes with this single change, more Cape Cod's, more Colonials, less A-frames."
Did you notice the documentation in here showing examples too?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it was, I thought it was fairly dramatic.
Mm-hmm, it was very interesting.
Take off that, the massing of five feet, and you're still building a very nice home.
To the chairman's point, I think those are things that will have a, have a pretty big impact.
And so I think the unintended consequence of leaving lot coverage where it is is that if we adopt the other things being proposed, houses are gonna start to go further back onto the lot, because there won't be any constraint to go back, other than lot coverage.
Say that again.
If, if we narrow up the buildable area by increasing the side yard setback, and we're compressing the height with the ridge, then if somebody still wants a 5,000 or 6,000 square foot house, they can still build further back onto their site if we're not managing that with the lot coverage.
It's gonna be the boxcar effect going on, okay.
Right.
But they can't right now, though, on a smaller lot, they're limited to 4,500 square feet.
A two-story, right, and no 30 feet.
2250 in footprint.
Yeah, double that, and that's what you got.
Right, so the most house you're gonna get is 4,500 square feet.
Yeah.
Right, but then with-
Yes.
Then, right now, because of the setback, right? But it's still, to me, looks, it doesn't look any more massive, because in theory, it's shorter, correct? So, to my mind, it's giving you a more efficient home, actually, because you're not building space you don't, can't use.
It just is, and I, you know, I see both sides of it, I think it's something to move cautiously on. I just think, I don't want to lose the effect of some of this new construction on the neighbors, because that's what we heard a lot about, and that's what other communities have dealt with as well, is that, you know, all of a sudden, my backyard is my privacy, my light, the, all these things have changed dramatically.
But when you have a 250-foot deep lot, I mean, you're not gonna avoid the-
Well, I'm not talking just about those, I'm saying, let's go for 150-foot deep lot, 50 feet wide, 150 deep. Then, in these places where more modest homes have been built in the past, story and a half, one story, whatever, story and a half homes, and then these large, tall houses, and granted, the ridge height is gonna help a lot, but they found that their life has changed in that, the side of their house, their backyard, and all of those things have changed dramatically. We even had one with a variance where somebody came in and said, "I've been working for years on my perennial garden, and now it's all gonna be shaded by this new house," so, or by the change in position of the house and the lot. So, I mean, those things do have an impact, and I just wanna keep it in mind as we go forward. I'm not saying to, I'm not saying to address it right here, though.
Well, so what do we wanna do in terms of moving forward to the public hearing? Do we wanna, wanna trot this straight 25% out there and see how we feel about it? Or do you wanna cut the chase here?
Do you think there's more information out there that would be helpful to us, or more examples, or what other communities have done? Or have we kind of exhausted it, do you think, Carrie? We've exhausted it. It's too easy.
My inclination, based on what I've heard, is to delete the 25% restriction. Stick with the 30 for now, you know, I guess, see what we come up with on the height and the setbacks. It just seems like that's what we should do at this point in time. And of course, even that decision, we will get some feedback from the public as well.
Any objection to that?
I don't have an objection either way, just because we'll get the public feedback.
Just get it out there.
Yeah, let's move on.
So.
Wow, it's fairly easy.
I guess the one thing I'd draw, perhaps just if we're asking staff, if they concur with the best approach we've ever taken.
I think we concur with that.
With what?
With the- What you said.
Feel very strongly both ways. Less filling tastes great.
With the, going back to the way it is now, essentially, the 30% allowed on lots.
Let's do that for now, then we finesse the, we don't have to talk about Country Club then either. Unless we change our mind at the public hearing. All right, good, that's two down, boy, we're cruising on.
Guess the next one is probably the next biggest issue, and that's the side yard setbacks. So the way the code-
Carrie, I'm sorry, can we, the building coverage requirements?
Yeah, we should-
Try to sneak by there, but-
So we talked about the 25 versus the 30, and what you're raising now is what, what goes into definition of building coverage?
Yeah, and that's what I was, kind of what my question is, and maybe I'm just missing it, but how is, where it's at, I, how is, what's the difference between structure and coverage? And why, 'cause it, let me, what page is that on?
What I've done here is, I've taken existing code where it was-
I like that you put it all together.
Yeah, I've put it all together, so it's essentially-
It used to be scattered in different places?
Right.
Okay.
So the, the language that you're seeing there isn't new, it's just moved from other parts of the code.
Well, what, so my question is, is what's the difference, is there a difference between buildings and structures? Or building coverage? Am I, am I completely missing something, or? Does that make any sense?
I think what you're saying is, we're, we're using the word structure, whereas up above, we're using the word principal or accessory buildings.
And the below, we're using coverage, so is that, is the coverage same as a building?
No, because we use some buildings from the-
We use building here and then structure here.
To me, it's unclear, something in there is unclear.
That's partially because we're drawing it from different sections of the code. For whatever reason, they referred to it as a structure in the general regulations where it once sat. We could sure make that change.
Let's make those, the language parallel.
Maybe it's just semantics, but it's unclear to me, and it-
Well, if we get defined terms, let's make sure we're using the same words to define them.
Anyway, it's, call it the same thing.
Okay, any, anything else on that?
Structure coverage, it just, it sounds kind of vague and un- Structure coverage, it just, it sounds kind of vague and, and difficult to, I mean, it's harder to get my, it doesn't sound as familiar to me. I think that's why building coverage here, it just sounds like-
Well, it's going to be a defined term and whatever we use, we should just use it consistently.
So that's my only comment, otherwise I, it's great that you put it in one spot.
Claudia, you had a comment?
I just, a quick one. The following structures or buildings in improvement shall be excluded when computing building coverage. A, driveways and sidewalks, but not patios, to the extent not in excess of 150 square feet.
Yeah, or subject to the above provisions. I had a note about that too, because it's conflicting with what's above.
And then E, in that section, where we talk about overhanging eaves and roof projections, not supported by posts or pillars. I was curious if there's any restriction on the width of an overhang. Some people use their overhangs almost to create like porches or walkways that are protected from the elements. And if they extend out too far.
Are you thinking of perrots or?
Well, no, just, just a, just an eve can be quite large.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a maximum or minimum. You just can't extend into a required setback more than three feet.
I think that's what we'll get to is on the setback is where we'll probably manage those.
Okay, if you manage it there, then that tells us.
Because I, I see what you're saying from a drainage perspective that ends up being-
A drainage and visually, you can have, you might have a setback, but yet if the eve is not included in the setback, it can go all the way over to the edge of the property line.
And eve can go to within two feet?
Can, okay, we'll deal with that.
So we'll manage it on setbacks, but the, but for lot coverage, all we're doing is the building four walls. We're not talking about the overhang. Okay. And then that gets, that seems fair because we get into this 2250 footprint, okay. Setbacks.
So, side yard, the way that would read would be for any lot that's less than 50 feet in width, five-foot setback on each side, so no change there. For lots between 50 and 59 feet, the, the setback is increasing from a 10-foot total, five feet on each side, to 12 feet total with at least five feet on one side. So it could be 66, 57, you could divvy it up as you wished. Then for lots between 60 and 74 feet, we're still using that four-inch increment. So there's no change to the code there, but for, for each foot that a lot exceeds 60 feet in width, the setback increases four inches. Basically, for all lots under 75 feet in width, we're now requiring an, at least two more feet of setback for anything under 75 feet in width.
And so, and right now, a 75-foot wide lot requires 10 feet on either side?
Right.
So what's a 74-foot lot require then?
We'd have to run the calculation, it would be about nine and a half feet.
Okay.
It's, it gets up there, all the way up to 75 feet, it would end up being the same once you hit that.
Right, that was my point, I guess, yeah.
And when I look at it, so, so 20 feet side yard setbacks on a 75-foot lot, that's by my calculation, just over 26 percent.
10 feet on each side.
Right. 12 feet on a 50-foot lot is 24 percent. So it's, you know, it's, it's in the same ballpark. And right now, we just require 10 on a 50-foot lot, so it's just 20 percent
Yep.
of side yard setback, whereas we require 26 percent of the lot width on a 75-foot lot.
So I have a, a comment on this. I, I like this, and what my concern about is, again, back to that non-conforming thing. Is there, I'm just throwing this out there, isn't there, is there an exception if it's five today? Can you, can you expand and have the same setback?
200 square feet on each lot.
But I mean, right, but I'm saying you would treat it as if it's still five feet for that building. Does that make sense, or not? In other words, the setbacks wouldn't necessarily apply to a remodel if there's an existing condition. There'd be a minimum, of course, but, or am I not making sense? So in other words, if, if you had a house right now that's five and five, and you wanted to extend out the back 10 feet, you could still be five and five on that 10 feet addition.
Only, you, you could extend 200 square feet worth of addition in that non-conforming setback.
Which seven foot would apply then?
Yeah, you could, you could go to the five-foot setback on one side.
I'm getting, what I'm getting at is, is should we have an exception for those conditions? So they're not subject to the setbacks if you're just basically extending your building? I'm just throwing that out there.
But is the 200 square feet exception, is the 200 square foot exception just that portion that's actually encroaching? So if you're going to go out the back in the example he's talking about, and now you need to step back in another two feet from what you would have had to.
Yep.
It could be two feet by, what?
20 feet.
Two by 20. So you go 20 feet back all the way along the same line you're going.
Yep.
I mean, that, it makes it, makes 200 square feet sound bigger than I would have thought if it's just the part that's encroaching. You can get 200 square feet in the encroachment area?
Yep.
Or an equal amount of encroachment. If they only have 50 feet of encroachment, then you can add 50 feet to that setback.
Right.
It's 200 square feet or, or 200 square feet or whatever is less.
You can't encroach further into the side yard setback.
Can't get closer, and you can't, you can, you can basically double the square footage. It's up to that encroachment, but not to exceed 200 square feet.
You can double what you're already encroaching.
Yeah, you can, right, you can match whatever you have right now, or 200 square feet, whichever is less.
Okay.
Okay. So that way, that makes it sound like, you know, so if you've got, even like that two-foot example, you could go back another 10 feet.
So it protects, protects an addition to an existing structure, sort of. But creates new rules for a tear-down rebuild.
And that's what I was kind of getting at.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe you don't want to codify it so that you force a variance discussion.
Would we get a ton of variances?
Which variance?
Would we though if, you know, if people were five and five and they wanted to build out something, would they, would we have a? What do you guys think?
You'd probably see an increase. But if you set the, set the bar with saying no, then you got a solid ordinance. But if you start varying from it, then you might as well go back to the old standards.
I'm sorry, can you, can you explain the 200 again? I guess I'm not.
So in the example where you've got, let's say we've got an existing house that matches, that, that complies with five feet of side yard setback on either side. And they're going to want to do an addition out the back after we change this to require a seven-foot setback on one side and a five-foot setback on the other.
Yep.
So now they got two feet on one side, they could go back as far as they've gone back now.
Adrian's fault.
Right? I mean, if you've got, you've got a-
They could go back 10 feet with the two-story.
So you can fill in that area then?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
To 200 square feet.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, okay.
Oh, yeah, you could, yeah, you got plenty of room.
You could go back 100.
If you go back an inch, you could-
And, but you can only double what you've already got, so-
Or, yeah.
So you might have-
You might, if you have a porch and your porch is only seven feet wide, then you can go another seven feet into that setback area. Square footage and be no closer.
Deeper, right.
Right.
Impermanent structure, eliminating-
On that same level.
Yeah.
If there's no second floor there, you can't then go above it. So it's not like you can use that 200 square feet in all cases, it just depends.
Right, but say you've got, you know, you've got the house that goes to five feet on either side, and it goes back 40 feet, and it's encroaching two feet along that line. So two times 40 is 80 square feet. They could go another 40 feet back along that same line. So, so in effect, the 200 square foot is a lot more than it sounds like.
We're up to a point.
Because there's not that much, especially if we're only moving the encroachment two feet. I mean, somebody who's encroached already into the five-foot, that makes it less, but 200 seems pretty ample.
Okay, I'm, I'm, again, the unintended consequence.
As one of our, our writers, I used a great phrase. "It would affect the solar orientation of your neighbor." I liked that, I thought it was a great descriptor.
Well, I mean, it almost starts to make you wonder if the exception swallows that rule anyway. I mean, if you're going to make two feet and you've already got a non-conforming, do you get to just, in effect, that seven-foot side yard setback wouldn't apply to you once you're there?
Unless you're building new.
Unless you're building new.
So if you're building new.
Right.
It would affect the tear-down situation.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
So the remodel would get to basically continue with their non-conformity. And that's a fair, it's not a bad outcome.
And then, and then nothing in here makes it less, or excuse me, how do I say this? Less of a setback than we have today, right? Or it doesn't, there's, okay. In all cases, there's more, roughly two feet through here.
We're increasing two feet for everybody under 75 feet in width.
Okay.
Well, except for a lot, 49 feet or less. That stays the same.
Arlene was going to bring up again.
Well, I'm just trying to visualize, I'm just trying to think, okay, what is that, how does that work on a, it'd be a lot.
So do we need to talk anymore about side yard?
Should we talk about egress windows?
Sorry for my disorientation on setbacks.
They're coming up.
They're coming up.
I'm bracing ahead, pardon me.
You're reading ahead again.
Don't read ahead.
We'll come back to those after we talk about building height.
Yep, this is lowering the, for lots, 75 feet in width or less. It's lowering the ridge line height from 35 to 30.
What page are you on?
Page five of the ordinance.
Summary page.
Page five.
And the summary page, we've turned the page now on the summary. So anything over 75 feet in width remains the same.
Not to jump ahead, but I, I like that, but I, my question was in lots over 75 feet, should we have a midpoint measurement? I'm not necessarily saying it shouldn't be 40, but should there be a midpoint? I would ask you guys as to what. Does allow for more flexibility in those also. Yeah.
Yeah, there was no real reason behind why we have two, other than we just added that provision four or five years ago to the ridge line. Traditionally, we had measured maximum building height to the midpoint.
Why is that? What's, what's the advantage of doing that?
I think the idea was to try and, try and filter out the pitch of the roof so that you were, you were accommodating various different sizes. The consequence has been that, well, it has encouraged steeper roof pitches. Because if you have a long roof line, then you, you get to go higher. That's why I think ultimately the ridge line, but I think that was the goal originally, was to accommodate the fact. Some people have got a hip roof, some people got an A-frame, some people got a mansards, some people got a flat roof.
But if we do, if we do address the side yard setback, it might not be so crucial to even have it anymore.
I, I think that the height is a really, my own view is that-
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying the midpoint.
Oh, I, I'm fine with getting rid of the midpoint. Aren't you getting rid of the midpoint here?
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So all, all buildings, the midpoint one would go away?
Yep.
Right, okay.
And is the, and again, maybe I'm guilty of reading ahead here. Are we doing the, is the side, the second floor setback part of this? Or is it, is it down further? I'm trying to find that.
Yeah, it's, it's page six where, number three, where we've stricken that, all of that language.
And on your bullet points, is that anywhere in the summary? Is that part of the sidewall articulation? That's a different issue, isn't it? Yeah.
I don't see it in the summary.
It's right on the page before.
Oh, yeah.
Bottom of the first page of the summary.
Bottom of the first page of the summary, okay.
Second-story setback, base in height has been eliminated.
See, I can't believe I wouldn't put that in there, it's my favorite change.
I knew it was in there.
We know where you stand on that issue.
So, I've got one other question on, on this building height.
Okay.
Then, we're going to just put in the max height. We're getting rid of the midpoint, but we're not saying, we're not making any changes to the number of stories limits.
Correct. I think you had asked for that the last time.
Is, is there a current story limit?
Two and a half.
Okay, so we're keeping the two and a half, so it's two and a half for 30 feet.
Right.
Could you ever get two and a half in 30 feet?
Lilliputian.
I, I think it's more to prevent a three-story that's under, on a 75.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think the 30 feet would take care of that.
Yeah.
Well, then you can address all, you know, what if you have the old, you know, 19, late 70s, where you come in and you, the split, the split entries and all that other stuff, and where do you start counting your stories and stuff? So max is really nice.
Okay, so we're good with that, and we're good with the second story, getting rid of that second-story setback business? Okay, so now-
When we have the public hearing, I would suggest to, I love the drawings on page A1. I, I think that really does a good job of clarifying for people that are having a hard time with the wording in code, which can seem arcane, with understanding the impact of this change.
Yeah.
Which should include some things like that in whatever materials we have would be a suggestion I would make.
You know, it takes away the big A-frame type.
I think it's a great idea to think about some graphics for the public hearing so that we can explain what we're trying to, how these are going to look.
Example, visual examples for each change, as it's appropriate.
So now, Commissioner Scherer. Egress windows. How are you feeling about that?
I feel pretty strongly that, that we have to address them in some way because they're proliferating and they're cutting into the side yard setback with good walking and machinery access. I was a little bit moved by the comments that one of the writers, that we've been reading numerous emails, wrote in and said, "Do you need it on both sides? If you provided it on one side of your house, could that be adequate? So that if you wanted to modify a lower level and you needed an egress window, you had at least a little more option within your floor plan that was in that lower level." And I was just curious what everybody else's thoughts were on that.
Could we include that in our side yard access situation? And specifically say, including egress windows or below-ground items should not impede, you know, some access.
Still have a three-foot clear?
Yes.
On one side of the well?
Mm-hmm. And then not necessarily-
Essentially, that three-foot clear covers the window well issue for one side to address Nancy's.
Does it?
You'd need at least three feet on one side.
Unless you have a 40-foot lot and it's five feet on each side.
If it'd be allowed on the other side, not. Are, I guess, is our language requiring it on both sides or one side?
It's both sides as written. If we were to take a, strike that H, it would be covered under the, that site access where you need at least three feet clear. So you couldn't put a, an egress window.
That's just a possible alternative to me, based on some of the writings that we received from different developers and, and others in the community.
But some, but somewhat the window wells is that when they're on the side, you can't, it takes up that whole setback. In other words, it's, it's, to me, it's kind of a safety hazard. I mean, you've got everything right up together, and that's kind of the point of it. It's not necessarily, it's, it's just the closeness and it just takes away all the room on the side.
So for you, it isn't the access question?
No.
It's a safety question?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I was, I was just addressing the access.
And for, for me, it's both, I think when I-
Well, both, but I mean, it's safety too.
When I think about bedrooms in a house, we're, we're allowing, we're getting rid of the setback on second floor. So we're allowing more bedroom space on the second floor of a house now, on the, the sidewalls. And we're still allowing window wells front or back, or for egress wells. So we're just saying, if you need them on the side, you also need your five feet of setback. And I, so I, I like it as written for those reasons.
I can accept that, I just was, I was a little intrigued with those comments that you see.
Oh, that's an interesting proposal.
And the other thing, though, in getting back to existing conditions, if you have a five-foot now and you happen to remodel and put in, put, need one in there, how do we address that? Is that a variance then, or is that- Is that a variance then, or is that something that...
The only way you could have it would be as a variance if we left it written as is.
Even if you're replacing an existing one?
No.
No.
But I mean, if, if you remodel your house and you put a bedroom down there, you're already five to five, you'd have to put it in the setback. So that's a variance?
Yes. You'd have to ask for a variance.
You'd have to ask for a variance.
Is that the right thing?
Well, 'cause I think, you know, if you've got an existing configuration, I can certainly see a situation where somebody's got what's practically a bedroom, but they legally can't call it a bedroom, and we're creating a safety situation if we basically prevent them from doing an egress window, which will enhance the safety of that room that they're probably using as a bedroom anyway. And the fire department, I'm sure, wants us to give them an out.
Again, kind of is there a way?
I would rather see it, see it be on, either on one side or else have a different setback for, or I would like to have it on one side. Definitely, we keep the clear access, that an egress window could be allowed only on one side of the house, but that the setback for that is three feet instead of five.
That's another possibility.
I, I like, I like the way it's written with the five-foot setback.
I don't, not at all. I'll show you why after.
Well, let's get public feedback on the way it is now.
So leave the language as it is, and then we can, it sounds like we've got a good debate to have on this. Go ahead, Nancy.
I hope this isn't a very ignorant question, but I'll ask it anyway. So if I'm on a seventy-five-foot-plus lot and I have a ten-foot setback, I can put an egress window within my ten feet?
Sure.
Okay.
Five-foot setback you need.
Okay, so I'm maintaining the five.
It's only the narrow, narrow, yeah. Well, access and... What I, but what I see too is somebody has a driveway there, and all of a sudden they put an egress window right next to that driveway and fall in there, and I mean, it's a...
Look, Commissioner is observing, unless I go with the farm style where I have doors at the bottom and stairs going down.
They're required to be covered.
Okay. All right, so... Non-conforming front yard setback.
This is Carrie's deal.
Yeah, I'll just read this one and see what you think. For a lot with an existing dwelling unit within a non-conforming front street setback, the existing non-conforming street back, setback may be maintained for an addition or a tear-down and rebuild of a new home, as long as the new construction is not closer to the front lot line than the existing non-conforming structure, and shall not be any closer than thirty feet to the front lot line.
Yeah, I remember this discussion. This is exactly what we asked you to do.
We were thinking about the one case over in, in...
Rolling Green.
Rolling Green with the curved road.
Well, there's, there's...
Well, there's almost one tonight.
There's examples of that all over town.
Right, it happens whenever you've got a curve and you're trying to do this average, and you've got an existing structure, then the question is, what we were basically saying is, you can come to where the existing structure was, or thirty feet, whichever is further back.
But I would ask, do we always want, in perpetuity, every non-conforming structure in town?
I'm sure there's a situation out there where we probably don't.
Well, take, take the, the third garage stall we approved tonight. If that, that gets built next year, and then somebody comes along and tears down and wants to rebuild, they're gonna be forced to go back thirty feet.
Not with this language?
Yes, with this language. The way I read it.
They'll only lose a foot in it though.
Yeah, they're, they're, what, a foot into the thirty?
They lose the one corner.
Yep, they're twenty-eight.
That would be, that's right, that would be an example. If that house came down, they couldn't come all the way to where it exists now because that'd be inside of thirty feet, but they could come to thirty feet. So it's either where the existing footprint is, or thirty feet, whichever is further from the street. Right?
But my point earlier to your point, though, Nancy, is it our job to fix every non-conforming thing, to keep pushing these homes back to make sure they line up?
No, but if you have weird anomalies in town, I don't wanna necessarily perpetrate them for every tear-down.
Now, this is in chase of a problem we deal with almost on a weekly basis, where some lots are just not buildable because of the average on both sides.
So this solves your problem?
It solves a lot of problems, yeah.
Well, yeah, there's gonna be situations out there.
However we can help you.
I guess I would say, yeah, if staff is happy with this, let's hear from the public.
Yeah.
Okay. Isn't this actually more lenient? I mean...
It is.
So it's not, it's doing the opposite of, you know, perpetuating the...
I think everyone, public would be in favor of it then.
Yeah, this isn't really an address of seventy-five-foot-wide lots or less. This is more for...
It's probably more in the bigger lots.
This is gonna happen more in the bigger lots.
Yes.
And that are on curved streets.
Good problem for it, because you've had situations where people have rebuilt further back. You have that house that's forward, and now they're forced to go further back because of...
It's like offsides in soccer.
But that's exactly where I would say, if most of the neighborhood has rebuilt in a different configuration.
But it's never perfectly consistent. And usually it's a situation where we're varying on the block. It used to be you could average all four-hand setbacks on the block, or you could average the ones on either side, or you could do a parallel line rule. You'd have three choices. Now, the only choice that you have is that you have to average the two on either side. You're not taking into account what's happening within the neighborhood, what's on the block, how things may have changed even further down.
But you do still have weird enough, I mean, the, the one that was in, that we talked about, that you're referencing, Kevin, I can't think of the name, the street.
Crescent.
Was it on Crescent or Mary Lane? Crescent? Okay. Sat a lot further forward than everything around it. The house on Brook, the famous house on Brookview now sits a lot further forward than it should or than everything around it. Although the thirty feet wouldn't apply there because it's too small.
It didn't so much set forward as the curve in the road made it feel like it.
Then that was sixty-eight feet back.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the average, I think the average was really designed to deal with your basic grid street, which are straight streets, and you're trying to look down the tree canopy.
It doesn't work in areas with one-acre lots or cul-de-sacs or...
With cul-de-sacs and curves, it ends up being a real...
It doesn't work.
And huge lots.
Yeah.
I like it.
So let's, let's trot it out there.
Are we agreeing to agree?
All right, front, front-facing garages. Carrie, you wanna tell us what we're thinking here? Tell us how to think about this.
Where is it in here? Oh, it's in the, yeah, this is where I start to skip around a little bit. It's not following the ordinance, so sorry about that. It's page nine on the ordinance. So this is trying to address the issues that we talked about the last time. Provided some examples from other cities in there that talked about percentage of garage front. Fifty and sixty seemed to be the, the two that came forward. We're suggesting fifty here in the language. So it's kind of, the ordinance here is proposed as doing two things. It's limiting two-stall garage in the front, and then also limiting fifty percent of the front facade can be used for garage.
What if the other regulations state for, you've got fifty percent of the width of the principal structure? Is that what other cities have been doing, fifty percent?
Yeah, fifty, and we saw some sixty, sixty percent.
I, I, I was just, I did some quick math on it, and it looked to me like fifty percent might have been a little light to get a, a garage in there. So I mean, I would propose sixty percent just because of, of that. And the other thing that isn't in there, which I would like to see, is that the, it isn't, we kind of talked about this before. Can the, you know, a dominant element of the living structure is actually further out than the garage? You know, three to five feet? So the porch or whatever have you is, is further to the street. On sheet A3, there's kind of a representation of that, so. That, that was, that'd be my suggestion on there. I don't know if anyone supports that, but.
I think of all those ones that have a front porch, you know, like in, oh, over off of Tracy's at high school. So you get the, the nineteen-sixties two-story Colonials, they've got a garage on one side, it's attached, and then the entrance porch is in the front, runs along the front of the house, that's actually recessed from the garage, the width of the porch, so the porch is even with the front of the garage. And so, in my mind, I, I like the concept of not having the snout, snout-house garage type thing, but I would allow it, I would go the other way and say that it, not that it has to protrude, but that it can't...
At least even?
No, I would, I would even go back a couple of feet, maybe, you know.
What goes back a couple of feet?
I would allow the door of the house to be behind the garage, two to four feet, and, or the porch or any, anything like that, so that if people, that gives them a little more design freedom. Or, or at least even. I don't know. It just seems like we're really monkeying with the design on this. What are the other architects saying?
Well, my only comment is that somebody who still wants to build a garage in front of their house can turn it ninety degrees and conform with this, because the garage door doesn't face the street anymore.
But if they, if it's the narrow lot, they can't get into it.
Yeah, they can. There's a bunch on fifty feet blocks.
But if they do, then you've, you've kind of, you've tackled the setback issue. Because you need to create enough space to get into it.
But that's the point, though. You're not, the garage isn't, doors aren't facing you. You're seeing...
Right.
And that, and that, that seems to me fine, you're not...
So, so the house that we were looking at for a variance tonight, that garage sticks way out in front of the front of the house because it's at an angle, so then that wouldn't really apply necessarily either.
That would meet this, yeah.
I mean, you can't get more snouty than that, right?
So, well, I guess I would just note, and I'm not, I'm not sure how I feel about this one, but if we're talking about fifty versus sixty, on a fifty-foot lot, if we're gonna do twelve-foot worth of setback, that's thirty-eight feet of width, and that means a nineteen-foot garage, so I don't think you can do that. So I think it probably has to be sixty. But I, I'm reserving the right to say that I don't really like this, so.
Come on, Kevin.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not sure about this one.
We're saying garage doors, not the garage, the garage door.
Right.
Correct.
We could also say front-facing garage, too, if we wanted to be specific.
But do we wanna say something? That's true. Okay.
Twenty-four feet wide, that's lots of garage door, 'cause cars are not taking up twelve feet to get in.
Eighteen is a generous garage door.
That is just a thought, you know, fifty or sixty, I guess we could go either way, but I was just thinking, people will want their two-and-a-half, I mean, two-and-a-half-car garagees. That's just a fact, so.
Well, either way, let's, let's, I don't care whether we do fifty or sixty, let's tee it up for one of them.
You're both against it anyway.
I'm not sure. I honestly, I'm really, I, I wanna hear what people think about this. I'm just not sure about this one.
Change it to sixty, though?
That's fine, yeah.
Fifty or sixty?
Well, Carrie, could you, would you look at both the garage door width dimension, if twenty-four feet seems right, and the sixty percent, and come back with some, something revised?
All right, sidewall articulation for principal structure.
Yeah, you would ask to, to check out the Wayzata regulation, and we did that, and so that's the, that's the language that's included in there. The city of Wayzata did not adopt this.
That's why I couldn't find it, because I remember them talking about it when we met with them that one time. And I thought, well, I know somebody was, you know, they were doing something, and then I kept looking for it, and I couldn't find it, so. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think it's excellent. It's a great idea, and personally, that's why people complain, too, because you just have the wall that extends infinitely, you know, all one plane.
Like a fence.
Like a fence. So I think that at least it's going to help people's perception of the building that's going up next to them, that it's not just a prison wall.
But I think, though, I think if I read this right, four feet in depth, are you saying the setback has to happen?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, that seems, I mean, that, that's really, to me, really deep, because you, you, on a fifty-foot lot, now you'd have a nine-foot setback on that side, right?
Yep.
Right.
So.
It's not too practical.
For the next, for the next four feet.
Well, yeah, I mean, well, it's what...
It's not too practical.
My, my thought when we were talking about this, it would either be, it wouldn't necessarily even be a plane change. It would be a material or feature change or something versus fence glazing or something versus actual indentation.
Design feature.
Well, maybe the four feet is deep, but I still think that, you know, having some indentation adds variety to the architecture and...
Adds a lot of cost to building, though, too, doesn't it? I mean, it's gonna change the economy of the building.
I'd like to hear feedback on this one. I don't know what the right dimensions are, but I like the idea of a plane change more than just a, a surface change.
Four feet is too deep.
A feature, couldn't it be a bay window or just a slight projection of a window or something, or?
I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, we don't need to make it four feet. It could be eight inches. We would achieve quite a bit.
Six inches.
Some kind of architectural.
Be a bay window. It could be on a stucco, the way we do indentations and arches over something.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of places have fireplaces sticking already, already, right? So technically would...
They would meet the requirement.
But, but we don't let bay windows go into the side yard, do we?
We don't.
No, but I'm just saying, in that, in that setback, there's a...
Could be a reverse bay window.
Yeah.
Stand corrected.
An inverted bay window.
Sometimes you just put them in the wrong way.
Knew something looked wrong about that. All right.
So take out the four-foot provision and come back with some type of a breakup of that wall, whether it's windows or...
It sounds like quite a bit, but maybe try out three feet or something.
We could try it, or you could propose something else.
Or, or go to the Alamo Heights, whatever that one is, and see, find something that's not as extreme to suggest.
Do you think it's too much to do?
On a narrow lot, it's a lot.
No, that's a lot. I mean, you've taken...
Well, I think any change in plane is gonna be beneficial.
Yeah.
I mean, even, even twelve-inch, even a foot is visually...
So maybe there's, maybe there's some language you can kind of tinker with that. I think you're hearing that people like this notion of some, something that makes your eye think it's not a continuous surface, but not necessarily a specific distance.
You know, just to throw it out there, I would, maybe you do put a foot in there and see what the reaction is.
At least to get the conversation started.
People see four feet, there's a...
Accessory buildings and structures used for dwelling purposes.
Oh, yeah, this is really just a code cleanup issue, that we wanna just take that out of the code because we don't allow accessory structures to be used as a dwelling unit, so it's...
So much for your man cave.
That is page seven, number six. And we don't know why that's even in the code. It's not allowed. You can't have more than two, one dwelling on a site.
So it's interesting, because we don't identify, you know, what do you mean by for residential purposes? I mean, does that mean if it's plumbed? Or what about a heated structure with a garage, or with, you know, heated workshop or something like that? And the other thing that's kind of bothersome to me is the fact that as we talk about density, as we talk about changing families and things, where we prohibit mother-in-law apartments and, and, you know, over-the-garage apartment-type things in Edina. And I think that's unrealistic, and I think it's, it's troublesome to me. I think it's, it's, it's kind of backwards thinking in my mind. And I remember even in another community I lived in, small lot, small little, little house in the backyard practically that was used, it was built originally for a relative and stuff. So I think, I, I'm not saying we need to revisit that here, but I, I just think it's something to think about.
You recommended that as part of the comprehensive plan in two thousand eight.
It was removed?
And it was removed.
Well, I think people are worried about people using those things just for rental units, perhaps. Yeah, I know, I mean, that, I mean, that rationale, I kind of understand.
And then the last piece is the tree ordinance. You would ask to just take a look at... You would ask to just take a look at what the EEC was considering, and then the Minnetonka ordinance, so that was provided in your packet.
There's a lot of stuff in there. My concern is really what happens during construction, and part of it was, you know, we talked earlier on anything, you know, within ten feet of the building structure, that is what it is, but can you give back discretionary removal, and I think Minnetonka had talked about that, if you do remove other things, first of all, why, and then, second of all, you do have some replacement for it. So that, that's was pretty much my concerns with that, and that gets into a lot of detail. And I think they have a lot more different situations, don't they, Minnetonka? I mean, they're literally, they're trying to preserve a full-fledged forest and things, right, versus a coming in and clear-cutting ten acres or whatever.
Right, and their minimum lot size is twenty-two thousand square feet, so they're dealing with large lots with a lot of trees on them.
Yeah, so I, I think it's differing from, and that's my two cents, and in the back back, is, is that like an ordinance they used to have? Last pages you have? It says Exhibit A repealed?
Yeah, that's their, that was their previous ordinance. And that, that was the part that I, that was the ordinance when I was there, that was what I was reciting.
Okay.
The last, at our last meeting. I see this, go ahead.
I've seen, my thought is this, the extra repealed one with some tweaks, maybe closer to what we were here, so, anyway.
Yeah, that was what I was thinking when I was laying that out last time. I see this almost as a different ordinance than what we're, what we're working on here.
I was just gonna say, you know, it just seems like a lot to bite off, and it almost feels like it needs its own process to manage through.
It is on our, you know, it's, it's up at the top of our list on our priorities and work plan, so it's not something we wanna ignore, but I'm not sure if it's part of this ordinance.
I mean, I think, I think we're being pretty ambitious with what we've got on the plate. This could be an entirely lease separate.
Wasn't there just a press release saying that Edina is now a Tree City USA? And I thought they had, you had to have an ordinance in place before you do that. I don't know. But I agree with you, I think it's a pretty in-depth topic.
So can we put this in the parking lot and then come back to it? Not, not include this with what we're doing on the residential redevelopment?
Just treat it like one of our new items as we have those.
Yeah.
It's been on that list about five years now.
Well, I just think it deserves more, I think it deserves more than we're gonna be able to give it in between now and June.
Yes.
If you wanna...
Yeah.
That's fine.
So...
I think we have it on our Kansas, it is.
Although perhaps in place of that tree ordinance, we have this provision about double-car garages. And with all respect to Commissioner Scher, I'd like to put that up for public discussion to strike that provision, so that it's added to this list.
I'm fine with that.
You could put it up there, I don't support it, and I don't think the council would support it. I'd be really surprised if they do.
It's all right, I mean, I think it's worth having the conversation about.
My concern is that, while, while there may be individuals who, you know, are very comfortable living with one car, they, they have that option in any house to just have one car in their garage. We, we don't know who's gonna own all these houses in the long run and whether they're all going to be one-car families. My guess is, based on the history of our community, at least now, we're not ready to go that route as a wholesale community. I just don't see it when I observe what's happening.
And your concern is that then we're just gonna have the extra car and the extra stuff?
Extra car and all the extra stuff sitting around, and, and I don't think that's as attractive in the community landscape overall.
So those people who wanna, who have a narrow lot and are trying to figure out how, how to get more house, will just go with the one-car garage?
Exactly. And then we're left with the detrius, I guess would be the word.
I agree with you. I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm just, completely on the same page.
I'm on the other page.
I'm on the other block.
All right, so let's, so let's put it on, I mean, we may have, it sounds like we will have a, an enthusiastically divided opinion on this.
I don't know, I don't know who'll show up for public opinion.
Yeah, and that's fine, we can...
I mean, basically, we're mandating you do something extra versus, you know, it's kind of like, we eliminated the width for driveways and things. Now, granted, that's, it doesn't necessarily have the impact on the public so much, but on the other hand, I, I think it's something that isn't necessarily going to be taken advantage of very much, if at all, because people look at resale value of their homes and things like that, as well as the size of the house and stuff. And right now, we've got people with three-car garages that have four teenage cars out in front of them anyway, so it's, we can't really control things, you know, control how pretty something looks because of that.
So polish that presentation up.
Okay. You wanna go home, huh?
We're gonna talk, I mean, it sounds like there's, there's strong opinions on both sides, let's, let's add it to the list.
So is the revision to reduce it to one stall required, or just not require them?
You, you prepared to require at least one stall of a garage?
I'm not sure about that.
You're feeling very laissez-faire on garages.
I think it, beyond the lifestyle statement I made last meeting, I think it removes flexi, flexibility by insisting on the two-car garage. So whether it's one or zero, I don't know.
All right, let's go for one for now.
Okay.
We'll give you, we'll give you a chance at success.
I'll prepare my case.
I think zero will, will be certain defeat. All right, I would like to come up with more for the list, but I think I'd rather go home instead. Yes, I'm just horsing around. Commissioner Scher and then Commissioner Carr.
Commissioner, comment? Have we read that?
Well, we haven't yet, let me, so let me come back to that. Commissioner Carr had a comment.
When we were discussing your proposed wording about the sidewall plane of a home, I just looked at your attachment here in the city of Alamo Heights, as you also referenced, had some good language there, because they said, you know, the sidewall plane can't go beyond thirty feet without some kind of a step back, unless there was some combination of the following architectural features every thirty feet to break up the monotony. And then they talk about the bay windows, stoops, porches, chimneys. I mean, I think that concept is reasonable in that it doesn't force someone necessarily to step back their home and lose the square footage, but at the same time, it recognizes the interests of the next-door property that has to look at a blank wall. So I don't, you know, if others would agree, I would prefer to see something that gives a little bit more flexibility, but yet, you know, recognizes that a plain wall is not attractive.
I like...
We tried for that language, I think that was good discussion start.
Okay.
Good. All right, anything further on the, the ordinance revisions? This is good work, I know this is, this is long and tedious, but Commissioner Scher.
I don't know where my comment is best positioned.
Just lay it out there then. We'll find a category for it.
Well, I, and this is partly to staff, too, I, I had a surprising thing happen this last week. I drove down Fiftieth, and I stopped at the light right next to the movie theater, I was, I was going east, and I looked to my left, and I saw a sort of an interesting structure had appeared in front of Mosamia, on a platform in what appeared to be the public street, where we have an indentation for cars. A platform had been built out, and metal and kind of gray, not concrete, but some kind of buffer things had been placed around it.
Jersey barium.
Jer, okay. And, and a extended, extended metal pieces that have lights on them, and it looks like some sort of a top is being put over them, and then today, and there are chairs, it looks like outdoor dining, and today, a florist was there filling all the new boxes with flowers, they're very pretty flowers, and I thought, we never reviewed any kind of a variance that would have said they could put a outdoor eating area in the public thoroughfare. So I'm curious, and...
It is entirely within the right-of-way. They came to the city, I wanna say last fall, and met with engineering, Public Works, kind of, it's kind of the keeper of the right-of-way. It's, or at least what we thought it started out to be, similar to, oh, the restaurant on the corner of Fiftieth where Clancy's used to be.
D'Amico.
D'Amico. And the Rice Paper on the other side of D'Amico, where they put out chairs within the public right-of-way, approved by the city engineer as long as there's a pathway.
But on the sidewalk.
The sidewalk is clear.
Right.
No, in the right-of-way.
But not in the street?
No, not in the street.
Okay.
You haven't gotten there yet.
So, they approached us last year, and we approved something similar with tables in the right-of-way, not in the street, and they didn't show that tent structure with the big posts sticking up that is intended to be a tent. That was not part of their plans. So that's under consideration right now.
By whom?
Well, the city council is looking at it, staff is looking at it, considering it.
Do we have code that should have been handled, how to put this delicately, differently? Did someone omit bringing it to us for review, or do we not have any standard?
We don't, it's not a structure, it's, we don't review outdoor.
Should we?
Some cities do.
If, I mean, I think outdoor dining is a hot item, people love it, it's wonderful. And I, my guess is we're gonna see more restaurants wanting to do this, if they possibly can, and I just, since this was a creative application of the process, it makes me wonder if we need to consider adding some sort of parameters around how it happens.
That might even be the result, as the city council is now involved in it.
Okay. Thank you. I encourage you all to drive by, it's exciting.
Okay, any other, I think we've moved into Chair and Commissioner member comments, you did see council connection in the attendance list, any other commission member comments? Commissioner Scher?
I'm just chatty.
It's your night for commission member comments.
I just want to encourage all of you to read the air quality study that was recently released and featured in the newspaper today about the state of Minnesota. We're not doing as well as we had been in the past, and a number of suggested items that might be negatively affecting our air quality, one of which is another one of my all-time favorites, outdoor fires. Proliferating and affecting air quality is, is one of the items that was mentioned, there are many others in it, but it's an interesting thing, I think, in general, the broad topic, not just one element of it, for us to be looking at in the future, and it sounds like it's something that we should care about.
Very good. Other comments? Staff? I think that leaves us just adjournment. Commissioner Carr? You're not making a motion? We could be here really long.
Yeah, we're gonna stay here. It's my job. It's the newest member.
Everybody's gotta roll.
Set.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.